All right, I'd like to call this, call to order the planning board meeting for Marvin for November 16th, 2021. Checking quorum, we have six of our seven members here.
We are only missing Richard Holzberg.
Okay. So I don't need to go down the list.
Mm-mm.
All right, thank you. So we have quorum. Adoption of the agenda. All right, you go on.
Yeah. One request.
Okay.
One request is to actually remove the item number one, discuss and consider recommendation of text amendment for additional Marvin Garden signage. Basically, after reviewing the ordinance and just trying to get some clarification and interpretation, since DRB has already approved the signage, there's a clause in there that basically states that if DRB approves it, then it can deviate from what the design standards are. So since we approved it back at the August meeting, September meeting.
I think September.
Then it's already conforming and good to go. So unless anybody has any questions, concerns on that, then I just ask for that to be removed and then everything will move up and we'll just have those two items.
That was pretty much a rubber stamp anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm fine with that.
Second?
You need a motion to adopt as amended and then the second.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt as amended.
Michael's second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye. Ken says aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. Adoption of the minutes for the 10-19-21 meeting. Has everybody read those?
Yes.
Any comments, changes, deletions, anything regarding the minutes? I see a lot of heads shaking no, motion to adopt.
Move to adopt.
Melinda, second.
Second.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Yep. Do that before I figure it. Moving on, public comment period. Do we have anyone online?
Richard has joined.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Anybody online wish to make any public comment? Do we have, do you have any, Austin?
I do not.
And we don't have anyone from the public here tonight, so I will...
You can ask, see if anybody on WebEx wants to speak.
Yeah, I asked anybody.
You did?
I'll reconfirm. All right, hearing none, I'll close the public comment period. Which is, moving on to items of discussion, the first noun, item number one, the discussion of the new agenda and meeting management system. Austin?
Okay, so we're implementing this software, we're in the early stages of that right now, should be live in January, but basically it's just going to be a new way for you all to receive and view agenda packets. We're going to have a few more features come on as time goes by, but you're, not much is really changing for y'all. The agendas and minutes are going to look different, they're going to be a different format, but it's just a different way to get them and view them. They're going to be more interactive, you'll be able to actually control find and you won't have to skim as much, so it's just going to, it makes my job easier and it's going to make your jobs as board members easier. And then the next year we'll have...
Like bookmarking or highlighting or anything like that in software?
Yes, you can do all that.
Excellent.
So yeah, it's just going to make everybody's lives a little bit easier and you'll have some additional functionality come online a little bit later.
Sweet. And everybody will have a login?
Yep, everybody will get login information from me or the software next month and if anybody needs help use, and I'll give you guys some instructions on how to use it, but if you need help, just call me. But you can either set up office time with me or I can just help you over the phone, it's really however you prefer.
All right, so we'll get it before next month, so may have more...
It'll be, it'll be online in January, but I'll, I can show you guys sometime next month.
Okay, all right. Moving on, discussions, consider recommendations of the Marvin Heritage District Form-Based Code. Hunter?
Okay, so before I get into this, just going to go ahead and I guess start by saying that I know that we kind of already are planning to go have a recess meeting on Thursday. That's just, just in case, you know, just depending on how much discussion we have tonight, the intent here is probably around 8:30, 8:45. If it goes that long, is to maybe get a consensus of where the board's at, if we want to make a recommendation tonight, we'll do it then. If, you know, if we're getting around there and it goes a little past nine, then, you know, we'll keep considering if it's going to be, you know, a recommendation made tonight. If not, we'll probably then, at that time between 8:30 and nine, recess till Thursday, come back and finish. The other option is too, is if we get through everything tonight, you know, questions are heard, or if there's some revisions or stuff that staff, that the board has for staff, then we can adjourn and then come back in December with those revisions and then do the recommendation there. It just kind of, once again, kind of depends on how much we get through tonight, how comfortable the board is. Just wanted to go ahead and start by saying that and then, you know, like I said, because we got, I want to make sure that you guys are comfortable and get through all of this and ask your questions slash, you know, discuss on, discuss on the language and bring, you know, change or make recommendations if needed. So any questions on that?
Let me just make a comment, you know, for, you know, we have three board members here who also are members of the strategic committee. Now, we met last week?
Uh...
Week before.
Week and a half ago.
Week and a half, lose track of time. Anyway, and the strategic committee approved the Form-Based Code with a couple revisions, which I think you've now, are some of the additional stuff in yellow in here?
Yeah, so the draft provided tonight is wanting that staff, basically, last time you guys saw this Form-Based Code, I think it was in June, then when the council got tabled, I started, lots happened since then. That being said, staff came on, between Tom and I, we made some recommendations, really kind of added a bunch of just supplemental language in here, just to, you know, clarify on processes, clarify some definitions, and we'll go over all of that. All of that was then presented to the steering committee, I guess November 4th, I think was the date. Great discussion and they had a few recommendations and so they recommended unanimously with those revisions and so tonight, the draft that's being presented has pretty much everything that Tom and I have worked on since the last time you guys saw it, as well as those recommended revisions from this steering committee. And so we'll kind of get into those when we go through, but other than that, unless there's any general questions, I'll kind of got a structured outline here and I'm going to probably go through some certain things and I'll probably have Tom, Tom, Claire, you know, go in and if there's any, you know, questions on specific things, you know, don't hesitate to stop. I do not plan on going page by page, I'm going to plan on going through the key points and a lot of the main regulations. If there's certain things that any planning board members reviewed in the last week since you guys had your packets, if I don't hit on that or if I skip over that, once again, feel free to stop and ask those questions. Ready to roll?
Yep.
So, so one of the biggest changes, and I think I've discussed, mentioned this, you know, when we were talking about the small area plan, is that the way this was being presented back in June was the Form-Based Code, which is, you know, a way to do your ordinance language with the design standards and all that, all that good stuff. However, the state, one of the biggest things was residential design standards. Well, the state does not grant the, any municipality the authority to regulate residential design standards, except with doing it through conditional zoning and that both party, the property owner slash applicant and the municipality mutually agree on those and that's done through the conditional zoning process. So the way now this is being presented is as a conditional zoning district and there's a lot of good pros to that and Tom actually shared with me an article that the UNC School of Government put out about conditional zoning and, you know, kind of the pros to it. And the biggest thing there is what, what conditional zoning districts do is that when we adopt, if the Form-Based Code gets adopted, you set, you establish the district and then opportunity for these property owners to rezon to this conditional zoning district. We have an outline throughout this Form-Based Code of design standards, permitted uses, lot design standard, buffer, all of that is here. But what then the conditional zoning district does is so then each, each property owner, when ready, comes to apply for this conditional zoning. And they provide us a site-specific plan, you know, see if it conforms with this and they also, you know, there's certain things in this Form-Based Code that, you know, maybe we didn't fully think out on certain properties and that's where the conditional zoning gives an opportunity to address certain needs or concerns on each individual property with the conditional zoning district. You know, and, and that also, when I say address the concerns, it pretty much provides a chance for all parties, that's the elected body, staff, the applicant, as well as the surrounding property owners, to come give input or maybe bring something up to a concern of, hey, we don't want to see a brewery here, or we don't know if this buffer is sufficient enough and it could impact the surrounding property owners. Like that stuff can be brought up and then those specific regulations, if it goes greater or deviates from the Form-Based Code language, then gets adopted for that specific conditional zoning. So it provides an opportunity for more regulatory language to an extent that's not necessary maybe in here. And so it kind of provides that flexibility on all parties to then kind of come to a mutual agreement. And at the same time, if council or staff recommends something to the applicant, they don't want to maybe comply or look into, then, you know, it comes down to, well, potentially that's going to lead to their application getting denied and there's no legal kind of repercussion to that as long as it's, you know, within the goodwill and intent of the language and obviously no other reasoning behind on not approving that application. So, so this district, like I said, is now a conditional zoning district, meaning that once the district is established, if established, then the outline of the properties you guys have seen and that was approved in the small area plan, those properties are eligible to apply for this district. The other reason why it was kind of done this way is that we can't force property owners to comply even if we would have rezoned their properties, what it was, what was being proposed in June. They can sit on their property until they really want to and at the same time, whatever the quote-unquote non-conforming or grandfathered use is, if it's, you know, the residential use of the structures in general, can stay that way until really, I mean, either the use ceases or something happens to that structure, they try to do something. So we weren't, we weren't going to be able to force property owners to, you know, create this district overall, but however, we have so much input and support from a lot of the property owners that we know that we're going to probably get some applications within the first couple months of when potentially this district's approved. So I think you'll see some development happen sooner rather than later and it will then, like I said, each application will be considered at council, it will be actually considered first year at planning board, provided recommendation to council, there'll be a public hearing for each one. So it gives that, that chance for any surrounding property owners to come give valid input or, or, you know, voice their concerns during those ones. Because I know one of the things, there's a lot of, a lot of people either, you know, on this board, the committee, council, Marvin in general, have certain things that's maybe being proposed in this Form-Based Code that they're not fully comfortable with or don't fully agree with and that's understandable and we can't make it perfect, we're trying to, we're trying to make an ordinance that flows, fits and, you know, that fits within what is Marvin. And so those things then can be considered at that time. I mean, ones, you know, tonight, but at the same time, you know, if we don't think that a microbrewery should be on a certain property or, you know, some of those permitted uses, I know that kind of came up, one in the committee meeting, but as well as, I think, during our, in our discussions in the small area plans, some of those maybe, yeah, they don't maybe make sense for that specific property. But once again, that's what the conditional zoning is a, why it's, that's another pro to it, is that if it's conventional, like it was being proposed, then those standards are unified throughout the whole district. And so we don't have that chance to say, well, your property can't be this or it can't be that. Here, we kind of create the guide and the regulatory language, but then certain things like that can then be taken into consideration and discussed at the time of each approval. So that's really, that's the big thing. I mean, obviously the language is next, but that's kind of one of the biggest changes here that was kind of from when I started and compared to when you guys last, last saw this. Tom, is there anything you want to add on that or, and then if not?
Okay, thanks Hunter, that was a great summary. The only other couple of things is we needed to more precisely say what the review process would be, so that is now in here. And we needed to take out the municipal service district, the MSD language. An ordinance like this isn't really the place to establish it, so that'll be kindled in a different way, in a different time. And those are the major things. I guess just as a sort of blanket statement, don't think this is a shortcut by any means. This period of a year, a year and a half that the village has taken, the committee and the planning board and the village council, really would have been consumed anyways if a developer came to town and said, I want to approach you all and do something incredible in this village center that I write policies about. Then you would go about receiving possibly regulations a developer would have done or worked hand-in-hand or staff would have reviewed them for their benefit. But it, unlikely that a developer would have just come in with a straight rezoning request. You've already consumed the time, you've put on paper what you want to see out there. You've invested that time. It's actually pretty marketable regulations now. You've clearly shown investors what you want there and that it's going to be at a high quality and load density and how it's going to relate to each other and the surroundings, the time factor, the review process. So developers are looking for this kind of thing to do their creative projects. You just say from a year and a half of work, they may come in and say, it's great just like this or great job, but there's one or two things I want to propose a little differently. And that fits along the line of some flexibility that Hunter said. Again, those are not shortcuts and the public won't be left out of those discussions. One of the main, main things is just because you're establishing the eligibility area with those guidelines, it's not resuming. Not only that, but when you did get approached with a resuming application, the planning board and the village council do not have to immediately say, hmm, looks like it complies with what we wanted there, you're approved, and then go to work. Not by any means, you still can control the timing, you may say, we don't have the infrastructure yet for that, they may want to, and will need to prepare development agreement about facing and infrastructure, who's paying for what. But if the village is not comfortable in the location and at the time within that village center for a proposed rezoning to one of the village center sub-districts, they simply say no at the hearing, at the legislative hearing. They don't really even have to explain why, they're just, they either see something that's not in line with this code, or it's too early, or they want to see how another adjacent property develops first. So what we advise is that's the point to really control the timing. Don't approve a rezoning and then start second guessing at the special use permit portion or side plant portion or something like that. So you maintain full control at the front end during the rezoning as you, as you go across the village now. I just want to make that clear, you're not cutting any shortcuts, you're not reducing anything from the public's visibility and review, you are just merely setting a stage and you wrote the story for what's going to be there. And developers would like to see that and you like the product, I believe. So just wanted to kind of give those overview comments back to you, Hunter.
Yeah, and just, just to quickly add on that is the, in the procedure process that have been added in this, a lot of the work, a lot of the required materials is like a side plant, I mean, the draft and development agreement, all this stuff is, has to be presented with the application itself, meaning it does, it kind of frontloads this where it takes a lot of, it puts the pressure on the applicant and the developer. I mean, it's not any additional pressure than they were going to have to do throughout a normal timeframe, but it kind of gets all of that where then the planning board, as well as the elected body can, they're taking pretty much everything into consideration at the time of, of when they would vote on the rezoning. And so, you know, that's why, I mean, the two things, like that's why we kind of did the small area plan is, because then that's the other thing, is we're trying to create as much consistency and, and foundation in this where it's pretty already set forth and clear where, you know, take Marvin Gardens for an example, where the deviation lessons design standards are a completely separate document that are almost as big as this Form-Based Code just for that one developer. And that's not what the case is here, I mean, this is kind of the guide, design standards and all that for the district in general. And, and so it's not, you know, it's not going to be like a Marvin Garden side process that lasted forever, how long it did. Because we, that, we did not have language established and they were kind of making it up as it, on the fly and kind of through discussion and we have it all outlined right here. And so, so I think, I mean, you know, once again, you know, Tom and I, we kind of looked at it trying to take council's recommendation and, and this is the best approach and I think in our, in our opinion and it provides that control and flexibility. I think that the elected council wants, as well as even, I think even some of the concerns of just the general public is making sure we have that authority and control to make sure things are regulated properly in this district.
Yep, for those that are not a member of the strategic committee, I made the comment which Hunter just said, that this is sort of the end result of Marvin Gardens, but doing it up front. Now, you, you know, none of us were involved in Marvin Gardens, but this board has been, you know, involved in going back through and, you know, some, some text amendments and some sign approvals, et cetera. And so you can see, you know, that document that we've been having to work with is where we will end up being on anything that's approved in here. It will be pretty detailed, I think.
So with that being said, Tom, do you want, do you want to go through some of the some of the major things at the beginning here with like procedures, major changes and like how the permitted uses and we kind of discuss that?
Yes, thank you, I'll try to. Okay. We, don't get scared that I start like page one, but we added this statement that's in highlighting under purpose, which just really emphasizes for properties where a property needs to voluntarily apply for conditional zoning and receive resenting approval to one or more of the heritage districts, sub-districts, blah, blah, blah. It's, it's just saying, and it's repeated in maps and everything, that nothing happens until someone applies for rezoning in those, in that eligible area. So you'll see that throughout here, we kind of want to just emphasize that throughout everything. Let's see, I'm looking at the screen, someone zip through it. Okay, we added on page four, the Village of Marvin official zoning map. So if and when this Form-Based Code is adopted, what happens to the zoning map is we just put a dashed line around that eligible area, still going to be residential, but it's eligible for a future rezoning should someone want to apply within only those, that area for one of the four sub-districts. That's the only change that'll really happen to that map. And then there's page five is an enlargement of that map, eligibility area. Six you've seen in the small area plan that came for you recently. Okay, so finally the table of uses, the only, there's a few changes we made, I wonder if it's a quick, the uses and alphabetical where I know this was a product of the citizen survey, the committee discussion, the planning board discussion. And so tried hard not to make any edits that were unnecessary to keep the, the value of it. We used to have a column E for existing buildings, that was one, that was like the fifth sub-district, we took that out and we could talk about that later, but it's, those two columns that were in under existing buildings are now in the, where do we put those in?
Identified, they're identified as mixed use.
In the mixed use?
In the future landing map, yeah.
Okay, we can talk more about that in a minute. Church, house of worship, I couldn't really think in combination of think what we would want to regulate it for a special use. Let me just say, I mean, step back, when you have something listed as a special use permit, you need to also have criteria for how the board of adjustment is going to review those special uses. You can't just say it requires special use and then make up concerns on the fly, they're, they need to be in your ordinance and you really owe the applicant approval of the special use if they meet all your conditions. You can't add more to that use. So it's important that, A, you have the criteria and that you, if it's not, if it's sort of an innocuous use, why have standards for them for special use and just make them permitted? So that was the case on church of, house of worship, couldn't really think of why or what you would add additional standards to, music lessons and sales, and the third, drop-off only, post office and pharmacy. Those were the only changes. I think there was one or two uses that are rephrased to be more typical to what people are used to seeing.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
What's the difference, what's, what's class one and class two essential services?
Kind of definitions.
Oh, it's in the definitions, sorry. I was looking at the special use.
Yes, that, I think those terms came up when this was being generated because the village has those type of terms, those two terms in your village law.
Ordinance.
Zoning ordinance. But yeah, let's flip back. The other thing we did was just like you're doing now, is looking at the definition of some uses that are real common.
Yeah, that's, Tom, I'll add real quick and so basically when we were looking at this table of uses is one, like, there wasn't any type of special requirements or special regulations or special use permits, so that's one big thing that's added and we'll kind of get into here in a sec. The other thing is that a lot of these things weren't clearly defined and they're not clearly defined, it's, it's one community member interpretation, but two, it's, it's just, it's, it's easier to go ahead and have things defined or outlined, you know, so there is really kind of no question or issue there. And so this is, this is, these table of uses, as Tom mentioned, were the ones that were kind of put in through the community survey that have been seen in the original thing, nothing's changed outside of maybe an S to a P, but no additional uses have been added. The other thing I'll then mention is that, is kind of actually what Tom, that's kind of highlighted in green on page 11, is that one thing that, that staff is going to be working on after this is that updating our permitted use chart in general for the total zoning ordinance. And when you have things that, you know, state like, you know, uses that are specifically prohibited, it's better just to have them on a permitted use chart and just not have them, you know, show that they're permitted in those districts because if somebody comes and something's not clearly defined or, or, you know, in here, there's that they can try to justify and or, staff now has to consider whatever the next closest best thing that they can be defined as. And so, you know, that one thing that does is like, it, it could open us up to where, you know, once again, something could misinterpreted and get, and get in. And so we're going through over all and going to be updating our zoning ordinance with a seven, eight-page table of, of uses with definitions or clearly, I mean, or just, you know, that are just straightforward. And if they're not permitted, either one here or in our ordinance at all, I just will state it, but then it does not be marked where they're permitted anywhere. And so basically that opens it up for no, no wiggle room slash loophole for some type of random crazy thing to come in.
I did not see it in the glossary.
Yeah, it's not in there.
Okay.
Some things, look on page 13, if we went ahead and wrote the standards to it.
Oh, there it is, page 13.
It cuts off weird around there for some reason.
So as yeah, Tom mentioned though too, so if this gets adopted, it will become a section in our overall zoning ordinance.
Oh, there it is.
And so certain things too, where certain things are defined or where it talks about tables or other sections in our zoning ordinance in general, it'll have those references and like, you know, it'll all be present. So if something's like defined, like I think, assignment to like essential service class one and class two are defined in our zoning ordinance in general.
It was more for me, just I don't know what class two was, so, okay, thank you.
I also want to...
So let me go back, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
On, on the prohibited uses, I was a little confused with the, the green section.
Yeah.
So it's going to be essentially the same thing, but longer, or is it going to be rolled into with the permitted uses and say not permitted or?
But doesn't that ask, doesn't that ask to kind of eliminate the uses we allow and just, I mean, isn't that what that's asking?
No, no, so basically take the permitted use table here and you're going to have an expanded table where these uses would be on the table of uses. So basically, take the permitted use table here and you're going to have an expanded table where these uses would be on the table of uses, but they just wouldn't say permitted, they wouldn't be marked anywhere. Or you can do a thing where you just put X where it just says not permitted and then you just do district one.
So all uses will be listed in one alphabetical table and you'll have to look to the to the right to see whether or not it's.
Correct.
Actually, okay.
So all of this is still like, quote unquote, not permitted in the district. But but what Tom was kind of mentioning here or that we mentioned here, and that's, I'm sorry for the confusion there, is that we're trying to incorporate this in our zoning ordinance overall, doing a permitted use table in the zoning. So we'll take these permitted uses and you'll have those and then, you know, our current resident, R R U C and I guess business and are really, I mean, we have, I think there are really the only three. But um, all of that will be in there and then we'll even expand on this on other, like the the term where it says no other uses shall be permitted unless expressly permitted herein. So the way it used to work is that it was made, the term from not permitted through permission, meaning if it wasn't in there, it was not permitted. But that's what I was trying to say, now if that's the case, if somebody comes and says, hey, we want to do.
It's not on there.
Well, if it's not on there, you have to then find the closest thing that's defined. So it's better to have a huge list of
Permit.
Yeah, well, just of uses and then you just put not permitted if they're not permitted at the time.
Oh, so list all the uses you can think of and next word say allowed permitted.
Yeah, and Tom, I mean, because this is.
Can you, can we, I mean, how we're, I mean, we're going to, we're going to finish this and we're not going to think of everything. So how hard is it to add to that list after the fact? Is it just text amendment or how we doing it?
That's where the conditional zoning is a pro here. When it's a site-specific plan outside of maybe the mixed-use parcels where it's just like shell buildings, maybe for commercials storefront, like you can't maybe always think of every use. And so you've got to, you you've got to maybe kind of stay on top of that. But if they specifically in that site rezoning plan say, hey, we want to put a vape shop here.
Yeah, which we didn't know about ten years ago.
Correct.
Right.
Then if you know what the use is, which that's kind of the intent of the way the application is formed, what the land is going to be used for and what the, I mean, if it's a one building structure, like what the use is, then you can just deny that application.
Okay, so anything that's not in here that we didn't think of that comes into play later on, we can say, no, we can put it on the prohibited.
Well, yeah, and some of those commercial retail uses are ones that you're not maybe going to fully know because it might be once again rented space or something.
Yeah.
But that's where, yes, we we will, I mean, you can always amend, you know, with the times. I mean, that's just kind of staff, like everybody being aware of, yeah, because as you mentioned vape shops, that wasn't thought of a while ago. I mean, it's it's um, you have to, and if it's not there, I mean, that once again, a vape shop could be, back then would maybe be closely permitted now as a tobacco store. And so if you have something that's close to it, it's not permitted, then I mean, that's your kind of leeway on not still allowing it. But uh, but yeah, I mean, it's, Tom and and with his uh, within focus, his group, they they serve and and consult for a lot of different municipalities. And this is something that they've done for a while. I mean, they've, so it's kind of outlined and that's kind of the intent is that we'll, it's going to be a separate, like I said, it's going, we'll probably get to this after that. And it's going into our zoning ordinance in general, but.
So this table will probably four, five pages or something.
And you said a list is forthcoming, you guys are designing a list.
Yeah, I mean, once again, so the uses that are within this form-based code, one that are already permitted.
Yeah.
Are are what they are. And same thing that are strictly prohibitive, we're just saying that is that to take extra standards and longer and we're going to add stuff into our zoning ordinance in general, which will still be brought to you guys. And then, I mean, if there's something on there that we're expressly not permitting because it's not currently permitted in any district overall, if we want to make that a discussion, then we can, but we're just.
I mean, like it's like CBD stores are not are not listed in here, but like that could very well be a store that comes in and they could come under like health, health, you know, like depending, it doesn't matter what you're.
Dispensary later on, we don't have dispensary in this, that, you know, that's something that's going to come.
But I mean, is that something that we don't, you know what I mean? Like as a community, it's like, I, you know, if it's legal, you know, I don't know.
And I mean, like I said, I I've dealt with this in my job, it's, I mean, in a way, I, as Tom, as I mentioned, like you would kind of find the next close uses. If someone wasn't strictly prohibited or not permitted, in my experience, like I always tried to see if there was anything close to it. And if I still couldn't find anything close to it, then I was just like, I don't really know how to help, you know, an applicant. But if there was something close, then I'd be like, you know, you can apply for this. I mean, because a lot of those were still potentially special use, a special use, or they would have to rezon the property. So they were still going to have to go through an additional process. But um, you know, overall, I think for the for the Heritage District, I think we we went through this, I think we're we're good. But just for more kind of, how to say ammunition, but just like to have that control and authority and make sure there's nothing else there, there'll be an expanded table that's going to cover Marvin as a whole.
Let me, can I ask a?
So all right, so so that that then, will will that expanded list be in the general ordinances of Marvin, not in the Heritage District? I mean, you know, is that what you just said?
Yes, but the the form-based code, if adopted, becomes then in our zoning ordinance, yes.
It's part of, I understand that.
So then, we're, Tom, correct me if I'm doing this wrong, I mean, because you got your, this is supposed to be kind of its separate document that you kind of pick up and look at it overall, but it's still incorporated to our codified ordinance.
In two places in the ordinance.
Yeah.
You know, what, it will be in two places in the Marvin ordinances.
And we can go in and amend.
No, I'm I'm just trying to get my arms.
What is allowed in the Heritage District is not necessarily the same list as what would be allowed in the commercial form or overall of, of, yeah.
But most likely it would be, wouldn't it?
That you can do more over there than you could do here.
Yeah, so anything here would probably be allowed.
Would probably be allowed over there, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
So this this list, it's it's eleven by seventeen, it's a long, it's a pretty big chart. So down the left side will be uses, all kinds of uses you could possibly think of, we already have the list of.
Yeah.
And then across the column, the the top of, across the top of each page will have rows and rows and rows, well, it won't be that many because the village doesn't have that many zoning districts. You'd have the residential, um, for you.
So, yeah, that's serious. So basically take, I was going to say, Tom, yeah, so basically take this permitted use chart that's in the form-based code and it'll be expanded, one in the uses, but then two, you'll have your residential, R U C, you know, our current established conventional zoning districts. And be clearly identified if it's permitted, special or not permitted. And so it's just, it's all clear in a chart and you you find it and then there's a definition tied to certain, you know, to clearly define what certain things are, just so there's no misunderstanding. So it's kind of just, yeah, it it clarifies and makes it where there's really no questions about certain uses.
Well, on the table of uses, the gourmet grocery store, there's nothing in commercial only, is that, wouldn't that be where it should be?
So that's where, this kind of see proceed, this predates me, but the mixed-use properties identified in that future land use map are are larger properties that are going to have some type of mixed commercial or that. So that's why it's only in that mixed use, not saying that it can be in, not only in the commercial, but the ones that we identified as the commercial for um the uh future land use map.
That's already white, the White House.
They're not big enough.
If I'm reading this, you know, I'm saying, but in the commercial district is, can it can hold it, but I'm saying, well, it looks like we can't put it in the commercial district. Well, am I reading that wrong?
Oh, no, you're not, yeah, just, yeah, for the commercial district, for the Heritage District only, which like I said, it's only those properties that were just listed, which I don't think, they're not, they're not large enough at first.
They're not big enough.
How many acres are there in the commercial only?
Very small.
Yeah.
It's Robbie's property, like.
It's Robbie's.
That's three acres, isn't it?
Robbie's is three and then.
That can easily handle a fifteen thousand square foot.
But then that's where you think of the intent of the impact of the surrounding. I mean, all of that can still be considered if if somebody wants to apply for.
They still can.
They can, that opportunity is there, but it's just like that's.
The acreage is there for it. I mean, it's not that the acreage isn't there for it, I don't think that's correct. The acreage is there for it.
Well, for that, I mean, yeah, but that's the only property that I can think of.
But it's commercial only, is my point.
Well, that's, so that's where, no, everything stays residential, the future land use map, yes.
I mean, if he comes in and it's commercial only and then it says, okay.
That's where, yeah, he applies to the rezoning and at the same time, if that's what his, if that's what, if he's got some type of gourmet, if he had a trader goes, I don't know if we're going to, just use that as an example.
Oh, well, the parking lot would be horrible, so it makes perfect sense.
Well, I'm just.
Either that or the other one.
If he had trader goes come to him and say, hey, we want to put a trader goes on your property, if he wants to apply for it, he can. If they present everything and nobody has concern with it, I mean, then in a way, yes, it could be like approved. Um, it would basically either be, basically the rezoning could be approved for the Marvin Heritage District and then it'd be actually mixed use.
So would people require rezoning as it sits now?
Well, everything's going to be rezoned.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean.
Yeah, but I don't know if the buffers would, like if you tried to put, if they'd have enough buffer.
Right, like I said, all of that, all of that comes into consideration there, I mean.
Three acres can hold about thirty-three thousand square feet of commercial only, so.
Well, it's.
Even with buffers and everything like that, about one, one acre holds about eleven thousand square feet of commercial typically. So that's why I was confused at why that wasn't in there. But that's fine, you're right, everything's coming in, has to be, you know, come before us anyway. So if it's not there, it's not a big deal, is what I'm hearing.
Well.
I just don't understand why it's not there.
This is what was the, okay, through the survey, the committee and everything.
I've asked, I've asked that question numerous times about how, before my time, right, about like how this ended up being commercial only, how this one only, why is this one mixed use? Why is this one residential only? And and I know that we pulled some of this stuff, right, and it's it's a it's a moot point now, but like, and how those two properties.
Like a brewery, microbrewery's might pick up in fifteen thousand square feet.
Well, that's what.
And that's in there and a fifteen thousand square foot grocery store is not in there. I mean, we're we're kind of contradicting ourselves a little bit because the microbrewery's not going to be three thousand square.
I mean, yeah, this can be a recommendation to allow that in the commercial only, but from a staff point of view, I don't think it's going to matter. Like as in, I I don't, I personally don't see.
Put it in there.
Well, I personally don't see, you know, from my recommendation, like from my experience, if that happening, I think maybe Robbie's property is the only one, but that's where then the conditional zoning side comes into this. With it, if it was conventional and as it is, then you think of it as probably as a whole.
I'm okay with that, but I'm saying that the reason for it not being in there, we're saying the acreage wasn't there and that's not the reason.
I have no, I.
Okay, no, I'm saying that was, that was the original reason why it's not in there, the acreage isn't there, or the acreage is there.
As I, even though I know with the things come up, how certain thing permitted uses are the way they are, that was before I was here.
It's just strange, something that large would not be in commercial only.
Well, like, like I said, that was something before I was here and I know it went to the committee and went to the planning board and it was adopted by council and that's, that's what it is in here and that's, nothing has changed, that was nothing kind of changed here.
We're not commercial only. Oh, but you're saying, oh, no. Okay, okay.
I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I, it was really, I don't, I don't see any need, I don't see any rec, I don't see any needed from a staff.
And this might be semantics, but I know there's no pool halls, no pool halls allowed, but a microbrewery might have a pool table.
That's not a hall then.
No.
All right.
The primary use is what we're looking at, which the primary use would be microbrewery, so.
Okay.
Are gun ranges in there?
Uh, no, that would, I think that's already just allowed in our ordinances.
Yeah.
And our firearms ordinance.
Because you can't shoot a gun.
Yeah, technically, you're not supposed to be scoping in your thirty O six in your backyard, Kelly.
Yeah, you're not supposed to discharge discharge a firearm within a certain amount of feet.
Uh, don't let that a puzzle on your own property.
It's still within, I think.
There's something in there, there's.
But it's adjoining, you can fire it on your own property, but you still have to make sure your your property or where you're firing your phone, it still has to, and I'm not going to go out there and measure, but I'm just saying.
This is, this is beside the point, but yeah.
Anyways, um. Is there any other questions on the permitted uses? Like I said, nothing changed here outside of some going to special, which, just to clarify, special use.
The only other thing I had is is in the map, would, if if and when this becomes available or becomes approved, would we be, we're going to redefine that with color because you can't even see it on this map. You know what I'm saying? We have it outlined in black, well, change to a different color or something like that.
You've got to enlarge.
Correct, so not, once again, as Tom mentioned, nothing is being rezoned if this is approved until.
It's not, yeah.
Until the property, the app, the property owner.
So once it is, we'll, we'll change.
Yes.
Once that's adopt, once that's adopted, it's still residential until one property owner comes to work.
That's what I'm saying, when one property comes in.
And then the map is.
You got it, okay, that's what I'm at, because it's hard to see right now, but we don't really need to see it because it's residential, that's what I'm saying, gotcha.
It's only there in theory right now.
In theory, okay. All right, I'm good on all those.
Okay, so moving on to then page twelve, as when I, Tom, Tom mentioned is, you know, we had all these special uses in the previous ordinance, but we didn't have any special regulations for those special uses. And you got to have those, you can't, you can't make those up on the fly. So those were added, these are pretty general. I'll mention that the one thing, I think that the um hit, the steering committee record, part of their recommendation, it's identified here, is that it previously stated under the microbrewery and I think it was ball or restaurant that allowed or whatever. Anyways, if you look at microbrewery in number four, where it says exterior guest areas shall not have amplified equipment, that was um per recommendation of the committee.
Is that outside or inside, I can't remember.
Outside.
Okay, I thought it was outside.
And once again, even if it's, if it's inside, whatever, if there is any type of noise, that 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 falls under the regulations.
But we said they can play guitar without an amplifier outside.
Correct.
But not badly, can we put that in there?
Everybody likes music when they're in alcohol.
But um.
My thought was is that if their business, I was, I just want you to know, like, I was ready to go this season of this one, but my idea was like, if their business plan solely resides on them having outdoor music, probably not. Best for around here, you know what I mean?
Your business plan doesn't rely on that, you know?
But I mean, what about indoor, well, you can put new wafers right over here on the border, still be here.
All of it's still kind of, it's um, that's where our normal uh noise ordinance.
They announced it last year.
Because they're not allowed to have any type of the sound, I think it's after nine or ten.
It's either nine or ten, yeah, I I would have to check, but yeah, that is something that's already regulated and it would still apply to the Heritage District.
Okay. Full service on city, but.
And then the other thing that I'll, I'll mention.
Four hundred apartments.
That John brought to my attention earlier is that I know per discussion of the committee meeting about the amplified sound, if somebody wants to do that, is that one thing that can be done is we do have a temporary use permit, it's what the um uh firework one does for fire fireworks. This is all hypothetical, micro, we get a microbrewery, let's say they want to do some event or an outdoor concert.
He gets a big man, a big guy coming through, he can apply for a temporary permit.
And that that's, that's approved by council and and so on, so.
You know, the village is going to have some.
Yeah, so we have to apply ourselves for temporary permits when we have music on Marvin Day. Correct, we're going to have to apply ourselves.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
We we applied ourselves for other permits before.
Yeah, no, no, I know, yeah, we believe in it, we've got the building.
So, Tom, is there anything you want to hit on specifically in the um other rate, in the other special regulations here?
No.
Is there any questions on any of them?
I got, I got one more question, I'm sorry, page forty-seven, which would be page, I'm sorry, page thirteen on there. Uh, consignment thrift secondhand merchandise, I don't know, it says standards, five hundred feet of separation between consignment thrift secondhand merchandise, measured in a straight line. I'm not sure what that means.
Yeah, I would wonder why they can't be next door to each other, is that what that means? You can't have two?
I don't even understand what this is saying.
Oh, that's all I'm answering on.
I don't understand.
Copy that definition from the sort of the template we use for other communities and the idea there is that you don't have a long line of, what looks like flea markets, um, where everybody's got um, I believe this allows you to have some, no, no outdoor storage or displays, let's see.
So it it's saying if I have a consignment store, I can't have another consignment store until five hundred feet away.
Yes, and basically, think of it, think of it as, um, take a mixed-use parcel, take that they have, like, I'm going to use, I'm going to say mixed-use parcel there, but take Marvin Gardens as, because they they build shell commercial retail space. Let's say that somebody gets approved for a special use permit for a thrift shop in one of the store sections and then somebody wants to come and apply for the next one, it's exactly kind of what, I mean, you don't want to cluster your commercial retail with, I mean, that, I mean, this, or even if it's standard.
I thought they couldn't display merchandise with five hundred feet from the door, the way I was reading this, I thought that makes no sense. It's just kind of a, it's, I I know you copied it from somewhere else and, but I just, it doesn't read well to me, anyway.
Okay, yeah, I think it's.
Between your business.
Yeah, but still.
It's probably the easiest thing to put in a space quickly and you want instead to have a good mix of uses and not have just sort of secondhand or thrift products um consume or use your entire commercial or mixed-use areas.
I mean, I'm actually kind of surprised that we don't allow flea markets, but then we'll allow a thrift store?
Maybe it'll be a bougie thrift store to make it here.
Like a reset, like a consignment reset.
Trust me, they have those and.
I'm sure.
Well, no, no, yeah, we know, they're like, yeah, but. Well, no, no, yeah, we know, they're like, yeah, but still, it's just, it's weird, it's just a weird.
So I.
And the, the farmer's market is a temporary, um, business, because you say you can only operate two days a week.
The intent, wow.
So you're putting it in the parking lot of Village Hall, where, where did you? Okay, is that what we're thinking about this, so they come, they sell their goods, they pack up, and we're kind of like, you know, but that's, you won't have many people.
But it still opens up the opportunity, once again, if, let's say, vintage properties developers, and I don't know, he has maybe, or butcher, like, or we get a butcher shop. They can then allow to do that type.
We won't have a farmer's market, if all these.
Well, I'm not saying that, but, but the Village Hall, the Village Hall to build the, the, the area for the farmer's market, I don't think, based off of our segmentation or any control, so we can't do, we can't disturb another, eh, can't disturb anything else on that, our property for three years. Meaning that, in theory, yes, we could do it in the parking lot on Saturdays or something at Village Hall, but, um, the long term is to have some type of facility, I mean, if, just really kind of a multi-use facility in this district in general, that, um, a farmer's market would then be permitted if, you know, go through.
Or we could just use the barn and acre.
Yeah, I mean. So if there's nothing else on the permitted uses, I'm gonna get into, um.
Well, I'm sorry, one more thing.
No, you already hit your one more.
Page fif, are we on, are we through this, page fifteen?
Yeah, uh, I mean, we're, no, this, we're still here.
Well, the owners and operators there, they have to clean up and everything, eh, why don't we put a failure to do so clause in there?
If, uh, that's where our, our penalties already comply, our, our penalties in our normal ordinance and, and everything already apply to that, so if they don't.
Why don't we add it in here, so we know, can we just take it from there and put it in here?
In the fir, in the first page of this.
Well, part, part of that. Particular, you know, we're telling them to clean up, but we're not saying what happens if they don't, and if they're only looking at that.
Could we just refer to?
Something.
This, this, like, just add the ordinance in.
Yeah, because if we put something in multiple places in, in the big ordinance, then you could, you know, five years from direct, down the road, they come in and change, change it in one place, but don't change it to the other, then we have conflict.
Well, but then you guys, somebody's gonna be responsible. Yeah, I've seen him.
You could do like a, um, you know, a site.
Or just refer to the clause, refer to what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, like you, you cited, so it's like, you know, at the bottom, it's like, see.
Per ordinance number twenty-six, that A, boom, boom, boom.
It, would that, there's somewhere back, towards the back, about a, it's not an operating agreement, what's it called? Between the.
Development agreement.
The development agreement and stuff, and it says, if the developer doesn't do what he's supposed to do, then we can find them in.
Yeah, some of them, yeah, that, that's referring to what.
If he cuts down trees, I think that was what, that was referring to, he was fined a thousand dollars.
No, there was, no, it was, it was, you know, down the road, if he, you know.
I just think it makes it easy just to refer to the clause that we're talking about where the penalties are.
Well, we can just make that, and Tom, I mean, we'll just make that note, I mean, like I said, we get, it's our general, it's our general penner, at least chapter, we really want to say it's like chap, chapter ninety. In our code of ordinances in general, where it says, basically, when you read the code of ordinances and get to that, it says, if any section of this, if any section of this ordinance is in violation, here's your procedure outlines, I mean, and some of that is in reference in our, in our zoning ordinance in general. I mean, I think it is at the end where it talks about any type of violations or stuff, I mean.
I just read this, I didn't see any penalties on that, and if we're just reading this, there are no penalties, but not everybody's gonna know to refer.
Would this, so, so this, so this is the language, if it's adopted, will it be codified, and so the specific, um, references to certain things, we, like, this will then be assigned a chapter number and so on, that goes into our zoning ordinance, and then where it talks and references other chapters, it'll have those specific links slash reference numbers in, in.
That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, it's just, that's a lot, and it, there's, it's not being put in until if the ordinance is adopted and codified.
And then number four, just to be consistent, you're calling a lighting plan, let's call it photometric plan, because, um, you refer to a photometric plan on page forty-four, on the Form Base Code, so a lighting plan is all, is known as a photometric plan, let's.
And I'm pretty sure that's how it's referred to in ordinances as well.
And that's, let's be consistent on the photometric plan.
Okay. That was a bit of a, is it, um.
It's an impressive catch.
Tom.
The only thing I can think of is a lighting plan would show where your poles are actually located, and even fixtures on the building. So it's, um, there's, there's those things, a photometric plan, it'll have a series of, uh, numbers.
It'll show the luminance.
Fill out, and that's what. Pollution ever properly aligned around residential.
But a photometric plan will cover that, it'll show the wall packs on the building, it'll show the wall packs on the building, it'll show the pole lights.
All, all of that's already part of our, for the development, so, for the development.
You refer to the photometric plan on page forty-four.
And so, so when you, I'm not trying to get down too, too in the weeds here, um, anytime, if, if a rezoning is gonna approve, and they pull construction permits and have to go, they have to show construction plans and all that, that's already a requirement of our ordinance in general. Like, to have that, that specific lighting plan that is reviewed by staff and the engineer.
Chapter one fifty-two.
Yes. We already have a lighting, so it, it references that, and then in the, in the same thing, and for development plan and all of that, so, and some of that gets into the procedure, so those, this is specific regulations for that, and so then that's maybe additional regulation for that specific use for that restaurant, however, if, for the most part, for a restaurant, potentially some of that lighting is already going to be established in their construction plans for the actual building itself, if it's either a shell building, or, you know, open commercial space, and then it's retrofitted for that, or if these uses are clearly identified at the time of rezoning for, for a restaurant, then it has to already comply with that.
That was a lot of words.
Yeah, like I said, there, I, you're bringing up great points, but that's a lot of this stuff, like, it's already, this, like I said, is being, this would be adopted into our zoning ordinance, and so all of the chapters apply.
Lighting to photometric, that's all.
I mean, it, it can still be a recommendation, but.
It means something very specific to them, so, yeah.
Just a recommendation.
One more thing.
No, I got, I got another page, one more thing, so.
Okay, moving on, Tom or.
Okay, let me mention, since we're about to leave page fifteen and the, um, the criteria for special use permits, we also listed and added definitions down in the glossary from these tables, the, um, allowed uses and the prohibitive. If they didn't have, um, a sub, a special use permit, then they're down there in the glossary. So it's, you could either run down there and look at this now, or look at them when we get to them, and it might kick you back to this table if you wanna talk about them some more, but it's just another, so, sort of another part to this table that's out in the glossary, which is just the definitions.
Yeah, I mean, unless there's any specific questions on these uses and whether they're defined, then I'm not gonna jump to that, and, I mean, we can but they're, they're there, and they're either, you know, referenced out of our, our current ordinance, or they are kind of a generic, you know, straightforward, but it's kind of clearly defining them just to make sure that they are defined. So, is there any questions on that? Moving on to now the sub-district standards of building types, so, um, you know, the biggest change, some of the changes here is that, once again, we went from five sub-districts to four, and, uh, one of the things is that was, since those two properties that were defined as existing are now mixed use, and then why, I, I think I explained this during the small area plan, why they were identified as, as mixed use is because of the uses mainly, and the regulatory, you know, of those two districts in general, but the way the mixed use ra, language reads is that it, um, development in this district must meet the intent of the mixed use, and shall have no more than thirty percent total area to be residential uses. And then what's added there is the thirty percent residential maximum does not apply to those two, those two smaller parcels, and it's mainly just because either it stays residential, or like, like I said, think of it, the district as a whole as a mixed use, and so it's just, that's, it was the from a use standpoint is the way we kind of looked at it, the regu, regulations that were followed, and that's why those were just identified as mixed use, but it's not in no way, shape, or form, it's like, oh, we're gonna turn down this house, or somehow you're gonna have to put commercial in front, because they have other guidelines and stuff they have to follow by, so the building would stay, and it's the uses on why, on those permitted uses chart, is on why that is that way. Yeah, and that same thing with the commercial property and the, the buffer, and some of that was brought up and brought into consideration, so that stuff was added there.
And the, and sorry, I'm just, um, the thirty, the maximum thirty percent residential, why couldn't it be seventy percent residential and thirty percent commercial? I'm just.
You guys came up with that ratio.
I don't remember what we said, honestly.
Uh, yeah, I'll quickly, because I was in on that, uh, meeting, there was concern, and it was this plan where they said, okay, you might have a mixed use district, but what's keeping somebody from doing all homes, and then sort of routing out their school capacity?
That was my concern.
You all came up with the thirty percent.
Because we did, we sat down and did the math, and then said, okay, so what if they took, like, the let property, and then the properties across the street, right, and they all were mixed use, and they all decided, okay, well, we're gonna put, and I know they can't, right, because we've banned it, but like, a cafe. So we're gonna turn the let's house into a restaurant, and everything else, out of all of that is then gonna be.
Yep.
Houses.
Okay.
So the idea was then, if we're gonna do this, to make sure that it doesn't end up being.
I get it.
I couldn't remember, I couldn't remember, especially with the discussion.
Why we.
It also brings in the open space part requirement stuff, like all of those percentages kind of break down into how a property's shaped, and, um, but that's where we're actually kind of getting into this next section. I'll kind of explain a little bit more on why certain, like, why we added two different residential sizes and, um, stuff like that, because one, the residential, but also applies to the mixed uses, one of the big changes is that we have the acres, acre lot size homes originally, and I think we had a fifth of an acre, eight thousand square foot patio homes. Basically, that was changing, we added medium, like, half acre there, and why, why that is, is that take that thirty percent, so on, is that the density's not going to increase on that property whatsoever, um, as in if it's a ten acre parcel, you know, you think thirty percent, that's three acres, and that's three houses per acre, or however you wanna, you know, look at that, and so with the quarter acre, or the one, the quarter acre person, the half acre approach, is that what that does is provide flexibility, is that the density is not gonna, so basically, you can get three quarter acre houses, or three half acre houses, three acre houses, provides flexibility into the open space requirements, infrastructure, the mixed use part, part of that, um, on those mixed use parcels. And same thing with even the residential only, if it was a half acre, or, or, you know, kind of combination of those, is that, um, it, it's not going to increase density or, or do anything in that, in that sense, it might increase density on paper, as in houses closest, closer together, but the density overall, of how many residential units of the total parcel is not, you know, that, that's not the intent of this, it's so then you do, provides flexibility to one, on the mixed use parcels, to allow for the actual commercial mixed use, and put in infrastructure, its parking lot, and have the adequate buffering screening, and the vegetation, open space, all, all of that, because I don't think, that was one thing Tom and I discussed, is the percentages, yeah, they make sense, but do they work, we don't know, I mean, it's just, until you, until you start getting those site applications in there, and engineers run, run the numbers on where the stormwater retention stuff have to go, the, the curbing, I mean, all of that, it might not work, and that's also where the conditional zoning kind of provides some of that, but that's why these two, um, residential, the small lot, medium lot, were being, were recommended, just provide some flexibility in the district in general, on, on that. Does that make sense to everybody?
So they couldn't have done a medium, a medium, just on their own, we have to actually spell it out for them? Like, that was the only two choices, small house, big house.
Well, the small house in theory could have went up to, it could have went, it could have been a fair in between, but I think if you kind of have it defined, and have these setbacks defined, then.
Well, and I thought we had left the Marvin Heritage District meeting with saying that, like, realistically, the building size gets set up by everything else, like, we don't.
I made that, I made that note, because I thought, I felt the same thing, I guess.
Because at some point, I was like, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, we're gonna, we're gonna start defining.
Yeah, no, I.
Sizes, like, everything else we do takes care of.
Yeah, I, I see what you're, you're saying, Kelly, the reason why the medium lot is where I think it provides a little clearer picture. Um, if you have that, just either the small lot homes and stuff, like, the setbacks are where they are, and you might not then have where they can get, I mean, they can go for a half acre, but I don't know if then where the, the maximum, I mean, the, yeah, the maximum that was there and stuff, like, it's not feasible, uh, or, I mean, when I say not feasible, I don't think the market would support certain things that, in, in this area.
So we can't just offer, like, a range, like, minimum of?
You talking about for the lot size or the house size? Because lot, eh, that's why lot size is going to di, dictate house size.
I mean, the, I mean, I guess it would be the lot size then, because then you wouldn't have to write as much, because the lot dictates the house size.
What do you mean, write as much?
Well, you wouldn't have to define, if you just say, lot sizes can range between, you know, a minimum of X and a maximum of X.
I mean, like, eh, eh.
It's fine, I mean, we can leave it like this, I'm just.
I think we're missing out here, is we're not, and I, I, we're not allowing, we're not mentioning brownstones, which I think would solve a lot of problems, because you got a lot of those, and those are high-end homes that don't take up a lot of lot, don't take up a lot of space, and you can have the density, and they wa, I mean, that, we're, we're allowing a cottage style home, but we won't allow a.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, it's a town home ultimately, and.
No, so brownstones are way different than a town home.
No, but, like, every, that's the way people look at them, because they are.
I think people look at brownstones as brownstones, I mean, there's an actual name for them and a definition, and, and, I mean, those are high-end, if you wanna call them a town, those are high-end town, they would go for a million dollar each, if you had a, if you had a brownstone here.
I, I used to live in a brownstone in DC, and, but it's still, like, they're still attached.
Yep.
You know what I mean, and, and that's. Yes, it is, yes, it is, um, and, but, in, in the, in the, in the survey, people were very much against that.
I don't think, I don't think we asked them about brownstones.
Well, yeah, I, I didn't know that brownstone, did you, I thought brownstones were old buildings.
Yeah, no, it's building brownstones.
If you, if you pull a brown, if you pull a brownstone on the internet, you're gonna get a specific building, you're not gonna get all homes, you're not gonna get, you know, your home, because it's.
And see the, I mean, you could say brownstone, and we didn't specifically ask for brownstone, there are not many builders in this area who would even build a brownstone, it's, I don't know if it's like.
It's the same reason we don't have brick houses in Wyoming, because there's not any bricks.
Yeah, I mean, like, there is, like, Seminole builds a similar.
But those are old buildings.
Those are what?
Aren't those old structures?
Old structures.
Yeah.
Isn't that what we want, we're in a heritage district, that's exactly what we're after.
So, just want to clarify, to, um, legally, we cannot regulate residential design. However, as I said earlier, we so, we can, like, legally outright, we can't say, hey, your house has to look like this. Unless the developer agrees, or the applicant agrees to have those, um, aesthetic design standards. So, when you're talking about the specific design of these houses, once again, some of them, what's in here predates me, apparently, that's what everybody like. Correct.
And we can say no apartments.
Correct.
Fine, both, both of those.
Okay, so then no townhomes, no apartments.
That's, yeah, like I said, all these are single family units.
You get, excuse me, um, you get into a fair housing violation if you regulate the tenure being renters versus owners. So you can only say, no apartment, you can't, um, you can't s.
No multi-dwelling establishments?
It's no multifamily.
Right, you could, uh, you can do that.
Well, I mean.
Well, we can say multifamily, because like, people build mother-in-law suites on their giant houses all the time.
That's called an accessory dwelling, it's different, multifamily is if it's, um.
That's what we live in.
I was about to say, I live in a multifamily home.
No, no, the definition of multifamily homes is a development, uh, it, it's pretty much apartments, meaning that multifamily means there are multiple fam, I mean, it's different, multiple, multiple dwellings. Multi dw, dwellings in one unit, one attached unit, is what the definite for multifamily.
Got it.
Maybe a duplex would be multifamily, right?
Duplex, yes and no, duplexes are their own thing, because a duplex is just, uh, to, uh, uh, the way duplexes are defined is, is two dwelling units that are combined by one single, uh, single wall.
Wall, yeah, I mean, townhouses are technically the same.
Like I said.
In cap townhouses are.
We don't need to go down this rabbit hole, but, because, uh, everything that is being.
We're gonna have a cottage, I think we should.
For residential or single, or individual, single lots, so even the patio small homes, think of, I mean, if it's Cottage of Marvin, if it's Amber Meadows, something like that, those are eight thousand, eight to ten thousand square foot, um, lots. Those houses range anywhere from two to three thousand square foot.
You could build a detached brownstone.
Um. So, so once again.
Get a corner wall.
The, the two things here is that on the specific sub districts, you have lot. Um, the specific type of lot, then you have the building types, especially mainly for the commercial. The stuff that's in here for residential is recommendations. The goal is that pretty much they look at this, they look at what's in the small area plan, they see what design we want and the type and feel that we have wanted, that's been discussed. And that's what they, they come with because if they don't, I mean, I mean, in, in reality, basically their, their application is, has a good chance of not getting approved if it's not.
But we can't, we can't actually control the aesthetics?
We, okay.
Of the commercial we can.
It has to be, yes, commercial you can outright completely.
Right.
Residential has to be mutually agreed upon between the applicant and the council, meaning, um, meaning that.
They come in with vinyl.
If they come in with vinyl, now, okay, once again, council can just deny the application. Or suggest this, and if it's not mutually agreed upon, they can deny it if they want.
You know, the land is, land value is very expensive here, so if you're gonna put a vinyl house on like a three hundred thousand dollar one acre lot, you're a fool. So.
Correct. I, I think like there's a lot of good points being brought up, but I think there's a lot of, once again, the regulations that are here with the small, medium lot and the setbacks that are being, um, recommended are, are kind of, one, it's proportional, provides some flexibility in, in what they wanna do, but it also will, lot size will dictate the type of house and, and so on. And so that's where it's like the large lot, which we won't get into building types, I think was originally suburban, considered as estate, medium is like suburban. Um, and then your, your small lot is like patio, I mean, like I said, Amber Meadows or cottages, so on, on a smaller lot, that's supposed to be kind of a smaller footprint and less setbacks. Um, but once again, even though that's being in the residential only mixed use, that doesn't mean you're gonna see the whole thirty percent of that where the density is really, the total density is increased. Um, but I would.
Sorry, I just skipped ahead to page eighteen, so.
So, I will, well, I'm on page.
Oh, why is there not a, so if there's a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet, does that then dictate the minimum? I mean, I don't see a minimum square footage here.
We, we had to.
You can.
To be for residential uses, we had to delete a minimum building size. Um, from what I could tell, the general statutes don't even let us have a minimum building size with the property owner's permission.
Correct.
That's really, um.
Legally.
Neighborhoods can run those and they can set up like what those things are gonna be, but we can't actually tell anybody they can't put, they can't build.
A tiny house?
A tiny house.
Uh, correct.
We actually can't say that.
Okay, for example, if somebody on a residential lot.
county has outlawed tiny houses.
Because it depends on what, it depends on if the tiny house is built. It, it gets in the building code and most tiny homes.
They're building them at HUD standards, starting to build them at HUD standards.
Yeah, if they build them like as a modular, the modular is defined as the same thing as a single family residential, you can't outlaw those.
Cause they're also nice.
If they're on frame, manufactured, you can regulate because those are, they have their own different set of building code standards. So.
That was part of what was illegal about what we're trying to do before.
Correct. And this even too, this, this predates one sixty D. This is, I, I started planning, uh, when I graduated grad school in twenty eighteen and I, I knew, I knew pretty much then, like then I was like, you can't regulate residential size, design or any of that. Somebody wants to put a metal shell building, as long as it is defined as a residential dwelling by its building code, I can't tell them that unless like what you were saying, it's deed restricted or within an HOA covenants or so on of a size and type of material, we can't do that.
That's where a neighborhood is helpful because they can set up.
Yes, but that's also where the conditional zoning and that develop, development agreement is also part of this where if the developer comes and said, yeah, comes and says, hey, we're gonna put the part of their, um, again, Marvin Gardens, when it was approved, they had, I think, five to ten different sets of, for the cottages specifically, five to ten sets of, um, elevations of those houses. That's what was approved with their, their zoning. So meaning that's what they're bounded by, that's what they agreed upon, that's what was approved. And that's the same concept that would go into this is that developer comes, the deviations are, you know, presented, if they're mutually agreed upon, then they're approved within that and that's the design standards for what, for that development. And it would apply to this, I mean, the residential lots and the mixed use and then the commercial buildings, yes, we can regulate residential design and look, so that's already there.
Now, we did observe the minimum building size when those structures look like houses, but they're used by commercial uses. Um, so you'll see that in, uh, in the next table on page nineteen and, and some other pages when it gets into, uh, like village house, commercial uses only, we do have the the building size of a thousand, a thousand in that column.
Real quick, Tom, and I wanna clarify, based off the committee, our discussion wasn't a part of the recommendation for the residential, for the small lot, medium lot and large lot, that we just take the building size maximum out because there's really no use to try thinking about that. Cause in a way, I mean, yeah, that's kind of getting, it, it's not a good way to do first, but I thought that's what the committee decided on. We, basically, we're just removing the max building size for the residential units.
For the residential units.
Yeah.
For the.
We're at residential zoning.
I mean, like the small lot homes with a five thousand square foot house on it, like.
Once again, lot size will dictate building size. A five thousand square foot lot with those set, a five thousand square foot house, even if it's a twenty five, I mean, a twenty five base, it has to apply, it still has to be applicable to those setbacks and for the most part, you're not gonna be able to get that in those setbacks.
Hmm.
No. Once again, take Amber Meadows and cottages, I looked them up right before this meeting. They're right around eight thousand square feet, so this is a ten thousand proposal at eight thousand square feet. Those houses are no larger than twenty eight thousand total square feet. So, and they have pretty, they have the same setbacks pretty much. Um.
Okay.
So.
I, I used to live in Argy, so like,
It's gonna.
You can fit, you can definitely fit. I think my lot was like eighteen thousand square feet and our house was like four thousand square feet, so.
Yeah, so the, the max, that's what I'm saying. So the, basically, the lot size is gonna dictate the type of the development and whatever the square foot is, is proposed for those houses will just be what it is. I mean, there's gonna max and there's gonna min, but it's not gonna be feasible for a developer to do, um, medium lot and then do patio type homes. Like, I mean, that's why it's kind of outlined the way it is. So getting in then to the next page nineteen, same thing, adds medium lots and the small lot regulations just updated there. Once again, building size for the large lot home, medium lots, homes and small lot homes will be just, we'll say no max. I think that's actually what we said. I think it's the way we did it.
Yeah, we were gonna say.
Just put it, put it no max where, and then obviously when it gets into where it says village house, cottage, commercial and stuff, as Tom mentioned, those that look like houses, but the uses are for commercial, we can regulate the size of those. Um, so that's why that will remain.
Okay, that makes sense.
Uh, da, da, da. The other thing, um, we took out and you'll see on each one, there's that additional building type as approved by council and stuff. Pretty much one in the residential only, that's the medium lot, it, it's, it's kind of pointless. I, I'm not really sure um, why that was there. So that, that was just taken out because the eight thousand with those setbacks, that's pretty much already, I mean, I mean, if you look at all of them, it's not needed. So those were basically deleted. And from my understanding, even with conversation with everybody, I've had, and everybody can figure out why that was there. Um, so I'm gonna get to page twenty five and this is the actual, um, this thing gets into like the, the, so you got lot type and you got building type. So this is now the building type for the specific lot types. Large lot, once again, we'll change that size range. Um, but that's pretty much what was, what was there. I think the one thing is that it was my recommendation and you guys can discuss this, is I was going to change the large lot to estate homes.
Wait, what page are you on?
Twenty five.
You know what? I am out of order. I don't know where my twenty five is.
Right there.
Oh, okay, that's fucking wrong. Okay, sorry, sorry.
Um, change suburban.
Change from.
Change.
Suburban to estate.
To estate and then change the medium lot and do that as suburban. I don't know, I just think that makes sense. And if everybody's good with it, then, uh, that will need to be part of the recommendation. But.
Take a note.
I've got it, or. Um, medium, so this is the pictures and stuff. I worked on this, but here's, here's what my recommendation is. Once again, you're gonna change the, um, medium lot to suburban, pretty much where it says medium lot, present and imagery is going to be a variation of patio and uh, the large lot, because this is kind of the hybrid. Um, if you look at, uh, is it Providence Glen? Some of those lots in Providence Glen, I mean, the design standards is one thing, but some of those lots in Providence Glen are about a third to a half an acre. Um, that's an older development, but, uh, I'm trying to think. A lot of the houses in like preserve and stuff are, I think, around the three fourths of an acre.
Preserve means the con, is the conservation style.
Yeah, so it, but it's the lots, so the lots are smaller.
They're about, I think they're point eight.
Yeah.
They're on point eight.
Parts of Marvin Creek are, I think, three quarters of an acre.
That's really old.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, Providence Glen too, beside it.
She said it's really old.
Well, in terms of Marvin.
Here, unless, I mean, if, if part of, I'm gonna basically take pictures that, like I said, it's, the design's gonna look the same, but I mean, cause it's, you're basically looking at a variation of already the, now large lot estate versus the small lot cluster. I mean, even some of the, if you look at the design of the small lot cluster, some of that would fit on, I mean, be in the medium lot, so it's.
I was gonna say Providence, Providence Glen was an, an exit after it was built.
Correct.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying that's one, I mean, um, and then same thing where it says height and stories, it, it's gonna be one to two and a half. I mean, it's just, if you take, if you look at both, you're gonna have a, have a hybrid and, and if you guys are okay with that, unless we wanna clearly define the size range, you're not gonna have a maximum. Um, and height and stories is, like I said, gonna be anywhere from one to two and a half. Modeled after I put adjacent, I mean, kind of the same thing that's in the estate because that is the, the goal is that it's, you're taking some of these houses that are around the area and maybe doing it on a smaller footprint, but still having the applicable setback. So it might be, I mean, it might be a smaller scale type house, but it's still gonna look and be a second pleasing to what's surrounding is what I'm trying to get at.
And what was the lot? What was the lot's size for?
Twenty thousand, the minimum.
The smallest one's ten thousand square feet.
Correct. So ten thousand's a quarter of an acre, twenty thousand, half an acre, and then forty three thousand's an acre. I mean, right out.
And can things fall anywhere in between that? Or you'd have, or like, I mean, could they do thirty car lots? Instead of quarter acre lot?
I mean, that's.
As long as it's not, we just.
So that's where though, that's where the third of acre would be considered that small lot. That's, we are trying to provide that variation, but we didn't wanna get too into the weeds behind the five. In theory, yes, because these are the minimum.
The minimums. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Somebody can go bigger, same thing on setbacks, same thing on all that.
Yep.
So it's just the minimum standards.
And are the setbacks for the medium houses already?
Yes, on page, uh, the original page, uh, eighteen.
Eighteen. All right, so that basically just.
So once again, I mean, getting back to that, you, it's providing flexibility and variation between the three. You got small lot of seventy, medium lot at a hundred, medium lot width at one thirty. Once again, some of those lot widths are gonna dict- dictate the depth because it gotta meet the minimum square footage. And, um, then the setback, I mean, so all of that, it's, those are pretty standard, they're flexible and, um, uh, and so it, once again, like for a twenty thousand square foot lot at a hundred, that means you would have to have twenty, twenty feet or two hundred feet in depth. So be a hundred by two, two hundred. Yeah, that doesn't sound great in theory, but that's where they might go a little larger to have shorter, but then as long as the building fits within the setbacks.
What, what's our typical rear setback for a buy right home?
Forty.
Sounds right.
Okay, so these are, these are a lot bigger then.
Uh, hold on.
No, wait, wait a minute.
It's forty or fifty on the, I think, I'm, I'm pretty sure the large lot is straight out, that is exactly the straight same language as our current ordinance.
I'll check.
I'm about ninety nine percent positive on that. Outside of the side setbacks, I think maybe it's fifteen. Medium lot, like I said, you provide some flexibility because that's kind of the, the role here, but.
So with that flexibility, right, if these are the minimums, then does it even make sense to put a range for a minimum? If the minimum is ten.
So actually, that's, those, that, that's one thing that's kind of, that was there as a, I just.
Because the minimum doesn't need to be a range, right? Like the minimum is.
Ten to fifty, that's actually there because I need that recommendation on what you, I mean, in my opinion, I think you do twenty, ten and five maybe. I mean, cause I think, um, that's the bare minimum and I, and I think even the side setbacks for example, the cottages is five. I think. Um.
I mean, that's basically.
It's how you own a fence.
I mean, five feet and five feet. I mean, that's ten feet between buildings.
Well, you know, they're also gonna get into, you know, the, uh, fire codes and building codes.
Well, the five feet, yeah.
I mean, you, I use my, my daughter's house out in Denver, you know, they've got, trying to remember what it is. It is one. A twelve foot yard on one side and a six foot yard on the other. I'm just, okay, something like that. And then, so it goes twelve, six, and then the next house, the twelve is beside the six, given a, yep, giving the total fire separation is what that amounts to.
Yeah, and Argy, I mean, they were, I mean, you can see in the pictures right on page twenty seven.
Yeah, they're.
I mean, it's like, it's about ten to twelve feet. I mean, we could spit on, I mean, you had to be careful about how you set the houses because if not, you'd be master bed rooming with your neighbor.
Once again, I mean, that's all stuff that we're not developers, so that's gonna be part of their side plan. And if you buy it, I know it comes up, it's like, it's came out, this job and previous jobs, it's that. People say, well, it's like, well, they don't wanna, you know, people don't wanna live on top of one another. Well, if a developer comes in and that's what they propose and they sell all the lots.
Clear what somebody does.
Somebody does. So I mean, and so people go in the buying houses knowing what, you know, especially newer developments, knowing what their type's going up beside them or what they are, what's existing there, so.
So you need a recommendation from us though, to get a firm number here as opposed to having a range.
You guys can make that, yes, because that's another thing that I meant to bring up. Staff recommend, I mean, like I said, I think.
And these then, these setbacks ultimately are then what dictate the size of the house that's going into this area, but it doesn't necessarily impact the density that's going into these areas.
No, because at, you think at a medium, on a medium lot or the small lot, if you think about.
Cause you'd have to have a lot of additional five foot sections to add another house.
This is basically like, do you want a bigger home or do you want a bigger lot?
I mean, I don't really feel like that's any of my business for pragmatically for the people that are building the house.
Because if, like if you think about it, if you do, um, at like a hundred foot wide minimum lot width, so that's your minimum lot width. At currently fifteen foot, if we, let's just say, let's do fifteen feet, that means that's a seventy, at minimum, a seventy foot wide build upon area for a seven foot.
A maximum.
Yeah. Maximum.
The maximum would be seventy feet that they can build on.
On a, yes, on a minimum size property.
Right.
That's what I was trying to say.
Right, so because the lot width doesn't change based on what their side setbacks are, so you know what, if you want, if you wanna put it in there.
But if there is a fire issue.
But that's the fire code issue, that's the developer issue, it's not our issue.
That's not our, correct.
They have to make sure that it's up to code with what the fire department says they have to have. We're not in a place to make that decision.
There's a lot of people who are proving these, you know.
Right.
And fires, fire.
So I think it's given five feet.
I think, yeah, for consistency, and because that's how it's kind of tiered and that's why I, I did that, but my original intent was to have ten and five.
Perfect.
And so if that's the recommendation of the board, then.
Well, go with your recommendation.
I will go, I concur.
Yep.
Okay.
Just some of his lips, he's paid away from my neighbor, I would say make it as big as possible.
Wow.
That's also why you moved from that neighborhood to this one.
Exactly, exactly. But you know, I mean, like living in DC in a brownstone, I was okay with moving to here, to Charlotte and not have to deal with the lawn. Like that was, we were so excited not to have, we don't wanna deal with the lawn. And now I have four acres of lawn.
Is we have, we're, we're a village of huge homes and we can't downsize anywhere and.
Yep.
That's, that's perfect.
We're doing downsizing we could possibly do.
A five thousand square foot brownstone?
Well, it's down, so you don't have a lot anymore. You don't have anything to take care of as far as.
But you got stairs.
We have elevators in those things.
Yeah, we're not regulating, we're not regulating the minimum size square footage, so if somebody in theory really wanted to build on a. Ten thousand square foot lot sometime, if it's in, within the parameters, a four thousand square foot. House, it's all on level.
Do it.
Go for it, as long as it applies to setbacks, so um. So anyways, yeah, uh. Other than that, like I said. Just to clarify, in part, unless there's any specific things, um, if there's a recommendation made tonight, if not, then I'll put this in for Thursday or whenever. The medium lot where it says press uh, precedent imagery, I'm gonna kind of take a hybrid of the two slash surrounding. Visual of, you know, preserve slash other things, cause it's just looking, I mean, from a design standpoint, that's what we're looking at. So. That's pretty much it that I have on the building types.
Can I make one? A recommendation, I made this before, and I think it just got accidentally missed, on page twenty nine, can you please get rid of that? Brick Victorian image, it is just.
Page twenty nine of the um.
You talking about the top right picture?
Yes.
Oh, we're way down twenty nine, I like that.
What if I thought that was my favorite house?
I would say move somewhere else.
This is for a commercial.
This is for the commercial village house.
He's gonna die on that brownstone sword.
I, once again.
Yeah, this is just, I, I'm gonna be honest, like, I think it'd be easy to argue that. This is a Victorian aesthetic and that is not. The turrets, I mean, like, that's just not um. It doesn't fit, design aesthetically, it doesn't fit.
What you got against turrets?
I don't have any against turrets, I don't like walking out.
So the two things I mentioned, plan board can make any recommendation or revision, as they, they, I, I personally, I don't really care.
I, I asked for this to be removed a while ago and.
However, I will then also mention, as the asterisk says, like, this, these imageries kind of for illustrative purposes only, as that vision guide on what these middles are.
We should be, we should be, we should be recommending.
I mean, I. I'll take it out. Everybody's in agreeance, and I don't care.
I, I just don't think it, I don't think the design style fits.
But, you know, you know, if you go get into that, you know, I think the objective was, all this stuff is supposed to look, look old.
Well, not, there's a difference between looking old and, and being in.
Back to page twenty five, bottom right, that doesn't look old.
Uh, TJ's house?
No, bottom right.
That's brand new.
I mean, that doesn't look old.
Oh, that's not TJ's house, I took that, I think I did. It looks like, it looks cottagey and been like.
I'm just saying, you know, that.
But it's not, it's not about old, it's about design style, and that does not fit within Marvin's. Collective. Design.
If we just wanna.
There aren't any brownstones.
Quick consensus on the. Alright, anyway, moving on.
Is anyone attached to that photo?
Well, if we're removing photos, you gotta remove page thirty two, the apple barn, because we don't want that, we don't want somebody coming in and. I mean, we're gonna start removing photos.
I want to put Sea Rock City on this, we have Sea Rock City on top of our house.
Just make sure we're not getting in the weeds here.
We are getting in the weeds, you know, let's.
But you know. If, if you're gonna, if you're gonna put your best foot forward.
Yeah, so that's.
And we don't wanna come back on Thursday, so let's keep going.
Yeah.
I'm just saying. I agree with you, though, on the apple barn thing, and I think that's.
Yeah, that's awful too.
For the apple barn photo.
That would go against our sign regulations.
Photoshop that signage out, cause I think that's the main objection, maybe.
That is, we, I mean, if we're Form Berries Code and we're looking at thing, we're looking at photos and we see that, that's not.
I think the purpose is to put a commercial barn use, barn building there.
Actually, in the um. The town of Vermont.
Yes.
That one is a barn style.
See, I jumped all the way to page sixty six.
Yeah.
We, if, if we can make a recommendation, we'll change that picture, or Photoshop it to something different, but at least it will, it's gonna still show the same intent of a barn being there, but. At least either remove the apple, but, or just replace it to something that's.
And regardless of what's in the pictures, aside wise, we have sign regulations, we have to have it from this, that would apply and regulate this.
I get it, but, you know, first brush people.
You just don't wanna contradict yourself, though.
I'm not. So, yeah.
Apple barn signage is banned, but public signage is good.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Anyways, okay, so if we. I never really kind of got a consensus.
Anyway.
If we're just, like I said, bringing it into the weeds, if you wanna make that as a recommendation, need to know now.
Moving on.
Moving forward.
Moving forward. Right now, we're on thirty three.
Awesome.
So there was change, well, actually on page thirty four, there's some changes here in the buffer matrix, mainly. Changing some of the uses where um, to add in the mixed use and residential medium lot and small lot. And allowing the buffer. Once again, where it says rural residential, it said not, not allowed to be directly adjacent, to be honest, the way I read prior anyway, is that. If somebody created a formal lot um. Along that, that's conforming, then it doesn't, where it says not directly adjacent, they could in, in theory get around it. With creating some type of buffer lot in general.
These are the setbacks of regulations based on.
Setback for.
Well, I'm sorry, this, uh, these.
Buffers.
Buffers. These buffers are based on, this is for the. The area as a whole, not necessarily if there's a neighborhood or anything else that gets put in, is that correct?
Well.
Or does that buffer? Like, if you're putting in a neighborhood, does the eighty five foot tree buffer? That then also applies to the neighborhood, or the neighborhood may be required for more, depending on density and that sort of, I mean, like.
That's where upon the lot, lot size.
That you're adjacent to there.
It depends on the lot size.
So, well, that's where it says proposed use, so in the, like, residential only, large lot, or the mixed use, so, take a mixed use property, for example, if it's light or something like that. If the developer, the application chose for the large lot, and the minimum buffer, if it's adjoining your uh, three pond here or metallar. Is twenty five foot for those large style homes, fifty and then seventy five. Um, because that's where it's like, where it said small and not directly, in the, like, where directly to rural residential, well. It's kind of like, you're, I don't, in honest, in honest opinion, I don't think you're going to see. Any type of small lot directly adjacent, because they're set like where they gotta be placed on the property anyway.
Right.
Um. I mean, they've already got the tree buffer and stuff like that, so like, this was not kind of actually clearly defined in the last one, so that's why it's, or I don't know if it's clearly understood. Um, that's why, like I said, those were added, and then you have buffer requirements in there as a minimum standard.
So. According to this, uh, according to like thirty three. And then you go, you flip over to the matrix. Medium lot residential and, and then small lot cluster is not even allowed next to rural residential.
That's where, so, once again. You have to look at it from its. You have to look at it from like, I think you're looking at it as lot by lot, so you're maybe seeing a small lot. Directly, like, the small lot house itself, lot abutting a rural residential lot. That's not the case, like, the way it was being proposed, where it was never directly adjacent allowed, that's what I was saying, is that in theory, somebody, if it was a developer. Say on, let's do the residential only, instead of buds, um, metallar, is that, they can create a conforming lot strip. Of that seventy five minimum, I mean, of that, of that buffer anyway, because it meets the acreage and the setbacks. And um, leave it as a natural buffer, and then, in theory, then they can put houses in against that buffer. So where it says not directly adjacent, yes, but that's why there's a buffer, you, so like.
So the house could back up to the buffer.
Correct, so then, and legally, it's not directly adjacent to.
Because it has the buffer.
Okay, so A, thanks for closing that loophole, but what I'm asking, though, is that this says here. The, not, not allowed, um. Their character features are protected by not allowing cluster residential or commercial adjacent, so then.
Where, where were you reading?
Well, that seems to be updated, I mean, and same thing like.
A.
The commerc- I mean, this is where, this is where that condition's on, like, because this is stuff that we're trying to put as much regulation here to protect the existing property. And I may, completely agree with, the issue is, is what is right, and what is going, what is everybody gonna like? This is where, when they come and do the specific rezonings, because even where it's like the mixed use commercial and stuff like. In theory, if you say mixed use commercial, that directly, I mean, if you take financial property, all that abuts three pond acres, so it's like. The commercial itself, it's kind of been when you get into the specific lot, specific design, is not supposed to directly abut.
Yeah, it's supposed to, you're supposed to layer.
Correct, but you can layer there with any natural buffer space or stuff in, in general, based on our other buffer and open space requirements, like the parking open space, infrastructure and so on, like. I'm at, I guess I'm asking you, if on a mixed use parcel, based off of how you say not directly adjacent. Then what would you consider to allow directly adjacent to property line, like, what could you put there to then actually establish a?
The way, the way that we had, that we had discussed it. In the last round was by using transitional, transitional density, so. Um, directly adjacent to um, rural would need to be buy right residential. And then whatever can go to buy right residential. Do you see what I'm saying?
And I think that's where some of this wasn't kind of thought out when it was being proposed originally, because. You say, like, the way that the, the way I interpret the district, the way that it was being written and stuff, like. Then how do you allow that, then, like, how do you allow that on certain properties, because there's no, there's no way to do that unless you.
And, and that, and that was my concern about this whole district, is that. The majority of the district is surrounded by rural properties, so it's like, why are we trying to put commercial? In a heavily rural area?
So.
So like that, this is what I have, this is what I have an issue with, so, so that now are those folks who. We invested in lar- larger tracts of land for our homes, are we now supposed to then acquiesce to make sure that. Someone who's gonna sell their property. And to, like, to develop commercial, so that they can get what they want, although we've already, we've been living there, we have farm animals, you know what I mean, like.
So, like.
I don't understand, like, why we should.
But that's, that's where the, like, I. I don't, the, the issue here is, is I don't think. You would actually be surprised currently by right, on how much closer things are, or could be. To those adjacent properties than. How we're doing it with the buffer matrix and so on, like.
Yeah, but I mean, like, and I, you know, I, I understand that, but. We don't have every single rural homeowner sitting at this table. And are they gonna, who, who's protecting them, right, who's gonna, they, they don't know, like, they, they.
So, well, that's where.
Are they gonna take your word for it, they don't know you.
But that's where the individual rezoning itself, and they do the site plan, okay, we'll take the residential only, if they come and propose a, a cluster development, if it's fifty. However, it, it's proposed, I mean. Then if the buffer, if you have the language in there for buffer, that's their bare minimum, okay? If everybody metallar comes and says, hey, we're not against this, we're not comfortable with this, or whatever, you can, if it's a mixed use property. Proposal that has commercial on a certain aspect or closer than something, then. Everybody gets, the surrounding, every surrounding property owner will get a notification when there's a um, letter, when there's a rezoning saying, here's the public hearing, here's your chance to come and speak, and here you come.
Oh, no, not my neighborhood.
But that's.
Because, and I, and I, I, I get where you're, where you're going, and I, I'm really not trying to cut you off, but. The, it's happened to us before, and my neighbors came on in force, and basically, we were given the finger and said, sorry. But this is happening anyway, so. So we were getting, we were getting a pump station, you know, like, I mean, we had neighbors that sold because of developments that were going in that we had no control over, so. So I, I, I appreciate your, but we don't trust, unless it's in writing. We're not gonna trust the, the process, because the process has never served us, has never protected us. Because councils change. You know, things change, and you just, unless it's in writing. It doesn't matter.
Well, you were saying, adjacent to the rural prop- you know, rural uh, subdivision. It should be by right, that's one acre lot.
Correct.
No buffer.
No, there, I mean, there's, there's a buffer, there's a twenty.
Nope, nope, it's, it's just, there's a minimum setback. You can't, the house can't be any closer than twenty feet.
Twenty or twenty five feet.
I thought you said the, the um.
The minimum setback.
Minimum setback is forty or fifty.
But I'm still saying, if, but, but those houses are then, in theory, would be thirty feet closer than. What they are, like, what this does is provides a buffer, and then those setbacks.
Yeah.
It, it just means for the building, but it doesn't necessarily.
It's putting those houses in those lots closer to metallar.
By right.
By right.
Then it wouldn't be in this.
No, no, I.
And there's no requir- you know, it would be no requirement for, for a fifty or seventy five foot tree buffer.
Correct.
This is better.
So I. Before the last Marvin Heritage District meeting. Girl fully wasn't really a big fan, still not a fan, still going on the record saying that, not a fan, however. I get the suspicion with the way that things have recently gone, that this is likely to go forward, and this does give us more control. Over the situation, and gives all of us the additional. Fifty feet, forty feet, or twenty five feet. That we don't have to get otherwise.
And.
So everybody that buy rights, they can be twenty five, forty or fifty feet, or whatever it is, closer to us. As a, as a.
Yeah.
As, as also as a property owner that's looking at this across the street, right, they could be, again, twenty, like, they could be that much closer now. What does that look like, and do all? You know, does this acre sell than that acre, so, you know what I mean, like, then does it get more peace, I mean, like, I don't know.
Also talking about the difference between one home and potentially now dealing with two homes with a greater buffer.
Sure, or.
But see, the density's not changing. That's, the density is not changing, so if it's twenty, if it, if it's a fifty acre lot.
No, she's, she's talking about them showing up one at a time versus the neighborhood showing up, cause if it goes by right, is that what you're arguing? Maybe they sell six, maybe they sell three.
If you have a by right subdivision, the subdivisions approved, and as long as they meet our standards, you can't enforce any type of additional.
So, so just um, just bear, bear with me, cause I'm trying to wrap my brain around what you're saying, so, let's say that um. Let's say that you've got, okay, let's say this is a rural property, and this is your. Big piece of.
Yeah.
Track, okay, so, let's say that now you've got, um, if you're gonna do. A buy right, you could have here, and here, and here, okay, great. Um, but you don't have as much buffer in between the property, the properties. Well, they don't, okay, but they don't have an issue with it, I don't ha- I don't know how to, I don't have to have.
I know, I, I see what you're sa- so, basically, you're saying, okay, if you have a lot, and you have by right, you have three. If you do smaller, then you have six, which is take a half, just in theory, but then, you move those further, and so you're saying you're gonna have six compared to three. That are still.
You could have six, you could have six homes, right, right behind just one rural property. So it's like, I get that the, the, the buffers are better. Um, and like you said, I'm gonna get voted down anyways, it doesn't really matter. What I have to say are my concern, but um.
Not at all.
But I mean, instead of hav- having to deal with like, three property owners that bump up to your lot, you've now got six property owners.
No, you don't, because they don't directly butt.
Well, you've got a buffer, though, but like, does that, is that still not there? But buffers are not, they're still not part, they're still part of that.
They're part of the subdivision, but they're not part of the individual lots.
Right, you get the buffer, and then you get the.
So you're talking about three, three lots that directly adjoin metallar, for example, versus six lots. I don't know, fifty, an additional fifty, hundred foot tree buffer, and then.
Yeah, no, I totally get it, but people, like, in, in reality. Those six homeowners, even though that's not their lot, they're gonna use it as their land, because they're, they're still going to use it, they might not be able to put anything on it. But they're still going to use it.
How are they gonna use, I mean, because that.
Well, it's, it's places to play, and it's places.
It's a tree, it's a tree buffer, though, but. I have a thick tree buffer behind my house, you can't use it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it was clearly defined, I mean, already one in our current ordinance or. Yeah, I mean, yeah, it was clearly defined, I mean, already one in our current ordinance or can, in here where. Those buffer or that open space requirement has specific uses on what it can and can't be used for. Some of them, like. We have subdivisions that has conservation lands similar to these buffers that says. Vegetated buffer can't be disturbed, or I mean, I mean. I don't know, I mean, if you're thinking about, I can't, I can't control what individual people do on their lots and that stuff that I can't think about or any of that, but.
But see, that, that's what I, that's what, as a, that's what I think about from a, is. How many people are gonna have access? Physical access to a fence with horses to, that are, and they're gonna get bit. Because they're not supposed to be touching the horses, because they're not even supposed to be back there, so you know.
Um, and I, like I said, I hear your concern, but. At the end of the day, it's either trust, it's the same thing. It's either you have three individual property owners. That are directly a but, or you have this buffer that can't be disturbed and not supposed to be anything in it. Yes. You're talking about if somebody's going back there and u- utilizing, well, it's still the same concept is if you had those houses out there anyways, like. You're creating a buffer and a chance for, I mean, like I said, that that doesn't happen. I mean. If, because those, those properties, they might put up a fence and they're gonna put it up, they have to put it up on their property. So I mean. I don't. Like I said, I hear what you're saying and I get it, but that's why this is kind of being this way is that this is one, the bare minimum. Two, like, there's. It, it is better than what is currently by right. And three is what I was explaining with the conditional zoning is that anytime this. Application is saying you will be notified and had, then have your chance to come and speak as a prop, individual property owner now. I get that you said that the process, that you guys have been screwed in the process for. I can't control that at the end of the day, that's who like the body. But in all reality, that's gonna happen regardless of. This being there or not, but at least this creates the cha, like.
Well, but if, if it's in here, it shouldn't happen. The process shouldn't fail if it's an ordinance, if it's defined in an ordinance.
Correct.
If it's defined in the code.
In, in reality, if council wants to change the ordinance, they could.
I think, I think one way, one good way to look at it is with this, it is, uh, this is a mechanism in which. Um, a council who is hearing this proposal can work with, can work with a developer to have a greater buffer, to provide that extra buffer. But if you don't have this. You get what they propose and what they propose might be bad.
Correct.
And then we can't do anything about it because it's by right.
And, and I guess.
You can have, you know, your by right, you can have grass all the way up to your property line and their horse. Whereas with this, you have fifty feet of trees before you get to grass.
I mean, and, and the other thing.
It's just a hard pill to swallow.
It's a hard pill to swallow, sorry.
And, and.
It's not, it's not what we're trying to for.
And I don't. I, I don't, I do not disagree with you and I. I, I, I want you to know that you're not alone in the struggle with this, because I don't. First of all, I don't buy that Marvin's gonna be walkable and I think that if we all wanted to live somewhere walkable, we should have moved somewhere that had sidewalks. Um, so I don't, I don't buy into that, right? I'm gonna go on the record there. I also think that as someone who wants to live in a rural area, like. This is it. I, I have. Well, nope, I'm just gonna say it, it's gonna be what it is. Those of us that feel that way about Marvin are apparently rapidly disappearing. For better, for worse, for indifferent. Those of us that want to truly live in a rural setting are getting pushed out and it is what it is. Right? And, and people can say, well, no, we wanna preserve whatever, you don't.
No.
Or this would be a thing. So. So, but if it's, if, so having said that, and I, and I feel. Very passionately about that, but I'm gonna try to like maintain, having said that. If this is the way it's going and I don't want to sell, because I don't wanna leave, because I wanna live here. For now. Then. What is the best that I can get? And how do I make sure that whatever is going in, whether or not I vote for it, whether or not I'm for it, whether or not I believe in any of it? How do I get the best that I can get? And I spent a long time. Looking over it and reading it and then trying to figure it out. And by the time I came to the Marvin Heritage District meeting. Last time, I was a little worried that Hunter was gonna stroke out when I actually agreed with something and came for it, because. This is the only chance I have as a person who has some control issues to have any control whatsoever over this.
I'm a fellow, I'm a true.
Because I, I voted against it the last time that we had it and I, I'm, I'm still not for this, but I realize like if this is where it's gonna go.
Train has left the station.
Yep, and it's, and I'm gonna, and it's. And I'm just, yeah, saying it on the record, it's gone.
And.
And this is the way that it's going. So the question then becomes how do we get as rural property owners? As someone who also has a farm, as someone who, a lady was walking down the road next to our farm the other day and grabbed the electric fence. And she was like, your fence bit me. And I was like, are you sh, doesn't matter. The things that I said out loud, she was like yelling at me from my horse pasture about the fact that she got, doesn't matter. Here's the thing. We've got.
Those are our neighbors.
That's the way that this is going and so we have to get the best that we can and the best that we can is the additional required buffer.
I just think, I just think it's sad that, sad that.
But I'm afraid that we're gonna have to move to Troutman or we're gonna have to move like Anson County to get.
This is being done at our expense.
I concur.
So.
But at the same time. That's their property and their right. And it sucks.
They're not even gonna be Marvin residency.
I concur and it sucks, but quite frankly, like unless we all go in together and buy it, there's nothing we can do.
That.
Other than set this part up and then.
I think metal art, metal art firms, we're gonna all sell our houses and then we're gonna like put a Walmart in, just.
I have, I have so many feelings about it, but. This is, and, and I'm not, again, I'd like to say I am not for this. I don't believe in that enough, but quite frankly, if this is the way that we're going, we. Then the best thing we can do is argue, is make it to where we have those required setbacks versus then losing the opportunity for them.
I gotcha.
That's, and it sucks. And I feel like now we should have like a beer break.
I have candy.
I'd, I'd, two things, there's like, yeah, um. You said I had a train's off the station. I've jumped out of plane and somehow landed on this train and. And I, there is like, you know, it's basically like, I mean, no, I mean, like, I think, you know, I think it's still that, in my opinion, I think this is a great opportunity for Marvin, but. That is where one way, you know, when I came on and able to then go this route, especially with the conditional zoning. Is making sure that the stuff that was actually, I mean, luckily it happened the way it did and this wasn't already approved. Um, the other thing there is like, I, I, I try to keep making sure, you know, I. I hear your concerns and everything about existing property owners and so on. And that's where. You know, I'm trying to preach this conditional zoning side is that, that is why that the way it's being proposed and the way that the processes. And stuff to even get to this point or get to the point of that development being that way. Will have every surrounding property, surrounding property owners, Marvin in general, however, will have ample opportunity to speak their mind. Because each development itself will have to have a public development meeting and then, and so.
Don't forget the rezoning.
And I do, and I do hear you on that and I'm gonna, and my personal take on it is, is that it doesn't.
Small step. And then that's the other thing too, is like.
As well as you do.
And that's.
Doesn't make any difference.
Well.
But this is the only chance that we have to add the twenty-five feet.
I, I will, I will say this.
I was gonna say.
I mean, like, bottom line, that's, that's what this is.
I could swallow the first two of these, but I cannot swallow having cluster residential next to rural. I'm sorry. That is not, that is not the way this was supposed to work.
And that could, like I said, that can be changed. You can put not directly adjacent, but then in theory, the minimum buffer would be a hundred and thirty feet because. A, the, a developer can do this by right right now and come and subdivide, do a minor subdivision through metal art and do a hundred and thirty foot minimum.
You know, though, my neighbors will be fine with that.
But that's what, so, I mean.
It's, 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 it's sometimes semantics, right? It's, it's, it's the mental like, just.
I, I understand. And that's, like I said, this is just what was recommended and it's open for discussion. I just, this is what.
I just, I, I do, I. I, I think striking out, I mean, and plus it's a contradiction. Because it says cluster residential is not allowed on A on page thirty-three, but then here it says that it, it needs a seventy-five foot buffer, so.
Well, that's what it's saying though. I mean, I think, I get the wording can be fixed, but basically, yeah, it's not directly adjacent. There's gotta be a required buffer.
Yeah.
I mean, like I said, it's open for discussion if we wanna. If we, I, I wouldn't say that it wouldn't be directly adjacent, because then I would just make it a hundred and thirty feet or something, but that's. Just because once again, it's just an extra step in the process. The, and I get, as I conveyed, that this is the bare minimum. If at the time, like that is stuff that staff, everybody can, that can be agreed upon during the approval, that actually their minimum setback is a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five square, uh, feet. It's an additional requirement. And that's where. As I mentioned earlier about like Martin Garden and stuff, like, we're creating the language, the, the base minimum of where, hey, this is like kind of the standards, design standards, everything you go by. You don't want to go below this. Feel free to go, you know, greater as in, in however it's raised, but at least it's creating some type of language where they can't just come out of the air and propose. A twenty-five foot buffer setback or no buffer setback for cluster development there and then it would be considered. So we're, we're trying to create a bare minimum to create. To have these standards in place.
I, I feel like I've said my piece.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, Alex, I mean, I, if there's no other, if nobody. If it won't, I don't, like I said, I still don't know the consensus of anybody else if it wants to be taken off or not or changed. I. I hear.
I, I just feel like. There are certain residences, residents that are. Potentially gonna get screwed. Because someone wants to put in commercial and make some money and they're not even gonna live there anymore. But, but some of us will remain, so. And it will, I, it's gonna, there are some people actually over here that are gonna, their, the value of their home is gonna be drastically reduced as soon as some of these properties, some of these, if they decide to go commercial. They're probably never gonna build another house for what they paid for it, so.
What, I mean, what gives you that impression? What gives you, what proof do you have?
Why would you wanna, why would you?
But you're just, you're just making that up.
No, I'm not making it up.
How can you prove that? I mean, this, I mean.
I, I mean, I, I could go and do like real estate research to show.
Can you cite somewhere else that they put commercial and the, and the property value decreased?
Yeah, I mean, not at the moment, but I'm sure I could find you something. I mean, it's just logical.
I, I don't think, I mean, either, either point, whatever I. It's um, said, I think, either opinion, whatever, you know, these kind of opinions in this discussion, but.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we need to kind of get on the rap, hold it back and forth on those two.
Yeah, your position is heard and. Nothing that anybody else says is gonna change. You're not, I'm not trying to twist your arm. Uh, I think Melinda said it well and that I think that ultimately with huge buffers. You know, I use the fifty acre parcel, you know, anywhere. You could put fifty houses there. Now, so if you still have that fifty acre parcel and you can still put fifty houses. Crammed into a smaller area with huge buffers around it, to me, that seems like you're better off.
Let's move. Let's move.
All right, moving on. Otherwise, we're gonna be meeting Thursday.
A lot of that, I mean, pretty much. Tom, is there anything in between that and then page fifty-three that we need to address? Because most of that's just.
Just page forty-five, let me see what I wanted to point out there. Has to do with historic preservation. Okay, so forty-five, historic preservation. Used to say. Okay, this, what he used to say was very strong to some degree because under the. Approach that this village was gonna rezone everything and then. Were advised that that was not a good way to do it in, in relation to wanting to have. Control over the aesthetics of residential. So whilst. Recrafting a way to approach that. There are very strong language in here about historic preservation needed to be softened. And which is what's proposed with the stricken text under A and the new text that's underlined. And um, remember these properties that formerly were referred to as on the. National. The National Register of Historic Places were not, I got that directly with an email after confirming that with the state historic preservation officer. Um, they have been studied, but they were not listed. I mean, definitely are not locally listed in this kind of local historic district. So anyways, I just proposed to say property owners of buildings that front Newtown. Road which have historic character encourage to retain renovate and where appropriate repurpose the building. Used to uses permitted in the Heritage District. And um, and remove the part adult national register and so forth. And, and I'll, also back on page two, I've, I've. Didn't highlight a similar change back there that said pretty much mandatory. Type of language that they have to keep the small um existing structures. Instead, I'd use the word encourage and, and some other things because you, some of those are really the sort of the most unique things you come up to when you're going down Newtown Road. They're closer. They have interesting architecture and shape and it starts to, starts to make a sort of place making. Due to its character and its location and, and short distance to the road. So um. If you have some language in here that you must conform and all that, it, it. Kind of creates a little bit of a hysteria. Property owners may wanna just run out and demolish it. We do not want that. We wouldn't encourage them to keep it. And, and reuse and it kind of builds on, on the look. So anyway, um, that, that's just something to point out there on page forty-five. If you have any questions, I'll take them. Otherwise, we can skip down to where Hunter was directing to.
So, what are we going next?
Um, fifty-three kind of gets into a lot of the, uh, things, but the other thing is where it's, uh, I'll get a forty, uh, did you just say forty-seven about the public space? But. Not a forty-seven, you know, the change of uh. Public and open space talks about all developed parcels shall provide at least thirty percent common open space for each parcel or where there are multiple parcels developed as a single project. It was basically kind of, um, basically took the word term parent track. And meaning that if it's a total site plan and re, redevelopment, that that thirty percent is just kind of, it's defined by development and approval. So then, yeah, the, the majority of what's left is a, a lot of stuff that's been added in, um, that was lacking in the previous draft. Uh, when it comes to administration, the application process and procedure. Which starts on fifty-three. And pretty much it just outlines the administration of um, the Heritage District, uh, as Tom mentioned. It kind of outline or takes out the, how the village shall enact an MSD. Just to clarify, like. The MSD in the long run is still kind of. In the long run, the goal is to have an MSD, but upfront, i- it doesn't make sense to charge property owners a twenty, that the recommended twenty-five cents per evaluation to. Put in this infrastructure, because a lot of this infrastructure and stuff that's gonna go in will go in per the, per the development. And then the long term is that the MSD will be established at a, not twenty-five cent, probably, I mean, anywhere from one to five cent. Uh, where. Then that infrastruc, then there's money in there to always keep that infrastructure, if it's the road, sidewalk, lighting. Um, planning, all that stuff up to uh standard, meaning that there's always funds available to make sure that is um. Up to par and that's why that MSD would be established in the long run. The other thing that. Allows in the conditional is, is in theory that we could do like. If agreed upon mutually between the property owner and um, the applicant at the time, is there could be some type of impact fee or a specific tax done for that specific parcel. Uh, once again, that's not really needed, um, but I mean, we do have that, that authority to recommend that if, if all parties agree. Getting into the application of procedure requirements, um.
Sorry, what does that mean?
So, le, once again, legally, you can't enact impact fees or an additional tax outside of if you establish that municipal service, service district. On specific properties. But during the conditional zoning, um, and this happens to that, if the developer or the applicant in the um municipality or the elected body agree, mutually agree to have some type of um. the developer, the applicant, and the, um, municipality, or the elected body agree, mutually agree to have some type of, um, impact fee or, I mean, additional tax for a certain property, then it can be established. I mean, sometimes that, that's done in, in part of any type of environmental impact. I said, north.
Cause they wanted to like fill in upon.
No, no, no. I'm saying like, let's say, I'm trying to think of an example. I just mentioned that, cause like I said, there is that, that authority there. I know, like, an example that I know of is that, and this is in Virginia, but it's still, it's a conditional zoning, is that a service day, a, uh, transfer station for a, um, waste, uh, solid waste hauler has to pay an, they, the municipality and them agree that the, the applicant on service, service weight provider pays a flat environmental impact fee to the county, that was a mutually agreed upon per their conditional zoning. I mean, it's just stuff like that, I mean.
Okay, this is, okay, that, this is, this would be a very ad hoc situation, this isn't something. This isn't like buying your way out of the thirty percent, or, okay, no, no, okay. All right, I'm with you.
It, and like I said, a lot of this used, but the conditional zoning, I said, you can't enact those without agreement between the property owners. The only other time you can do that additional tax is if you establish that municipal service district. But you piece that to, like, you have to prove that at the beginning of each year and set the boundary. And property owners can, in theory, app request to not be in that MSD, it's up to, I mean, council can then make that decision, but what I'm saying is that additional taxes, if there's some type of revenue that needs to be generated for the district, as in like, it's a mutual type thing, as in, then certain profits, certain of those developments, like, they have, sometimes happen in Florida with residential, um, things where, yeah, I mean, if they put in the, I mean, we don't necessarily have to worry, cause we got the bond, and that's part of their development agreement and stuff, but it's, uh, if it's sidewalk lighting or trails like they get, the individual property owner, it can suggest a certain tax or fee that those property owners are, have to pay, I mean, it's, it's not recommended, but I mean, that, that authority is there. So kind of getting into the application procedure requirements, I've kind of stated this, that the first thing is, once again, that this is conditional zoning. The property owner or his designated, has, um, had the, uh, oh man, um, the term that, the legal, where the property owner gives the legal authority for a developer, somebody to apply on their behalf. Uh, has to apply for this rezoning. And it's gotta be, once again, it's gotta be initiated by them, it's gotta be voluntary, that's, that's the terms of the conditional zoning. Part of them, their thing is, I mean, pre-development meeting, that's pretty standard, we have that in any of our development things. But, um, part of their application pack would be what they're rezonings for, side plan, I mean, side plan, a draft development agreement. You know, design standards, all that stuff is in package, and, and that's what becomes part of your conditional zoning package that gets reviewed by planning board than council. Tom, I might let you kind of hit on some of this, since a lot of this is just either from one sixty D or our ordinance in, in general.
Okay, it just, when, I thought when I was gonna start writing the procedures for this, I was gonna, add several, several pages instead. But I was able to, for the most part, refer to, um, the Village of Marvin's existing, um, development agreements. Well, the development agreement part is new, but the side plan review, rezoning, special use, all that is already, um, not only in the Village of Marvin's ordinance, but it's, it's very detailed. So, um, what did you want me to cover, the development agreement part?
I mean, I guess you need, like I said, anything on page fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five. I mean, like I said, a lot of that straight outline from our either existing, or kind of added in there, um, from authority from like one sixty D and so on, but if there was anything you wanted to specifically hit on.
It says, you would imagine, village council, if they're approached with a rezoning, and you know, they might say, we, we really like what you have, but we're not gonna be ready for you from a public point of view of providing, um, utilities, or sidewalks, or, um, fire prevention, or other things, um, part of what a development agreement can do is establish who's paying for what and when, and where, the phasing. So it is, uh, just as, just as important as the zoning ordinance, it becomes, um, part of their approval, it gets filed at the Register of Deeds. Um, and the current and future property owners have to, um, abide by the conditions in it. And then there's some speculations, and this is from one sixty D, what happens when the, when the development agreement is breached. Um, so that part is out of one sixty D. And where I said to add cross-references, there's already some language in the zoning ordinance that the, the village has that will be put in there. Um, or internally within this form-based code. Um, and that's, that's it for the fifty-four, fifty-five.
Yeah, and then, then the, I mean, the final things on the last page are pretty much the glossary, adding in specific definitions for those to kind of clarify and go forward. Other than that, that's the, the document.
We made it to the end.
For the most part, yeah. As I said, I, if there, I was, said in the, in the previous meeting, in the memo, that I wasn't gonna necessarily go page by page. Um, if there was certain things that, you know, I skipped over, but that wanted to be addressed, because some of the stuff that wasn't highlighted was already, once again, you saw, and I don't know the extent of all of that, but, um, I kind of wanted to highlight the stuff that staff has added, or that the committee recommended, and, um, but if there's any questions on specific of other things that were, that, you know, we didn't address, or, you know, any other discussion, be happy to answer, or, you know, discuss points.
So the goal now is to push this to council?
Yeah, I mean, the next, it's.
Prior to that, I've got a question, back to that, the long list of approved, you know, and this, you know, not approved uses. If, if we approve it tonight, what, you know, would be conditional on that being added before it goes to council, or what?
If you approve it, if you make, make a recommendation, you'll recommend as amended.
Well, that's what, so it, it, it can be, if that's a recommendation from the planning board to have that list in there, but like, a- as I mentioned, that full list will be added to our overall zoning ordinance.
That goes into overall zoning.
And it applies to all, yeah, so.
So it applies to all districts, this one included.
Okay, all right, for that.
So it's gonna, nope, the permitted uses in here, and the permitted uses in our current districts, like, none of those are changing, it's just adding basically those prohibited and other things just in a table, and then it will just say that it's not permitted, and that will be, you know, it have those twenty-four, or how many expressly prohibited ones. And any, any additional ones that we haven't thought of, but like I said, from Tom, you know, Tom's experience, they put in just the, um, but that will probably be, once this gets off, uh, I mean, you know, move forward, like, cause there could be some permitted uses or stuff that on that table are listed as not permitted, but I don't know, you guys discuss in, in a formal fashion, I'm not saying for the Heritage District, but, just overall, but for the most part, that table is already, is just going to include what uses are already permitted.
This is an important step, a very small step.
Yeah, okay. I mean, it's a big step, as in where it's establishing the opportunity for the district, including that, but yeah, I mean, cause it's.
They're not gonna be digging footage.
No, not even in twenty-two.
Yeah, because i- if approved, like I said, then, then you have individual property owners that have to meet the application requirements, and that goes through the process, I mean, you know, the sketch plan, the typical process for writing, announcing those developments, even by, I think, our current by rider, anywhere from like eight to eighteen months, like nine to eighteen months, um, just like minimum. With the sketch plan review, the preliminary construction, I mean, all of that, so even, I mean, in theory, if this thing gets approved, uh, or recommended and then approved, then you might have an application in early twenty-twenty-two. But it's still, you know, that's gotta go through multiple conversations and revision.
And that'll take some time, that'll take some serious time, actually.
Correct. Like I said, this is, this is a big step, but it is still a small step in achieving that overall goal of what this district is, I mean, maybe gonna be.
So we're gonna make a motion?
Any other discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Any questions?
Where, where does it say who's responsible for building and creating sidewalks? And the connectivity? I mean, I see stuff in here about sidewalks, but it doesn't say who's responsible for, for them.
That's where in the development agreement, because so the two things here is our, with the sidewalk, one, we have a grant to do sidewalk along, right along here. If we get a development in beforehand, before the grant's put in, then essentially we would receive a fee in lieu for the, either the sidewalk, or however it's, I mean, or, or it comes off our grant, it, it's all gonna offset in, in, um, in the long run. Same thing with.
And you're definitely getting a grant?
We've been awarded that.
We've already got.
Oh, you've already been awarded, okay.
Just the grant got pushed off because it's a federal, it's, it was a.
It's a reimbursement.
It's a reimbursement grant, but the funds come from DOT, and since DOT.
Ohio, am I?
Yes, so, um, that grant from Marvin Lou, the millinery engineering and environmental is supposed to start next year, and then the right-of-way procurement will be the following year, and construction is anticipated twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-five.
And so if we're talking about anyone build it, well, Fentress property is not a big deal, cause it's probably already got access, but like, in terms of like, if anyone wanted to do anything along that main area on Newtown, who's responsible for the infrastructure? Is that also in the?
It's part of the development agreement. So if you're in reference to sidewalk, the two options are, is that the sidewalk's not in yet, the elected body, I mean, they can, it can be approved that you put in the sidewalk, cause you know that the other is gonna be there, or you go ahead and receive a fee in lieu, so you don't have a sidewalk to know where for like a year or two. I mean, it's, it's all gonna offset where, even if you receive a fee in lieu, it's to create the full connectivity, so. And water and sewer is also still, I mean, there's, there's, that's where there's so many moving parts of this that when you first picked up, when I first picked this up, like, there's so many things that were put in here that it's like, there was a lot of what ifs, and a lot of different people that, you know, this could happen, this could happen, and it wasn't kind of clear, and so.
We've allocated, we have allocated the, uh, we've allocated relief funds to extend water and sewer along, along Newtown. Yeah, or with the county.
Some of that is also gonna be on per development, I mean, cause I've already gotten stuff with the county on, you know, the initial cost.
You're running it to the state line?
No, no, no. From, so there's a water and sewer line, or there's a water line at, at the, pretty much at the end of Martin Road and Newtown Road. Same thing down here in Martin School, there's a water and sewer line, sewer runs behind the new village hall property, there's sewer that is accessible based off of phase four, so, um, of the preserve.
And it also runs, I think, down by Providence down south. I think it runs up.
Correct.
Yeah.
But no infrastructures along this part.
Right.
But we have been, we've talked to the county, we've got preliminary stuff, preliminary numbers. Once again, each, certain development, a lot of, it's, it's all contingent upon like, one, when a development happens, but two, it's like, you know, the village at, at a point may, may do so, some of the cost share with the county to do, go ahead and put the infrastructure in, i- it's.
For all village residents, or just for the people that are coming into the new place?
Well, it would just be to, to get it here, because infrastructure is costly, and so from a feasibility standpoint, it'd be here, but in, yes, in theory, there could be a chance to then extend it even further down certain, it, it, for example, um, if a resident development goes on, Fentress or no doubt. Uh, regardless if it's this, by right, currently, whatever, if the infrastructure is put in by the developer, you know, I don't know the full engineers, I mean, that's what they do, but then it would provide access or a chance of extension maybe that way, because you're gonna have access points within a pump station at some point, where it would then provide a feasible, um, extension opportunity. The issue is, we don't own the infrastructure, we have to coordinate with the county, and so on, so.
TBD.
Yep, a lot of what ifs there.
But we have the money.
Yeah, but we did allocate some of our.
We have the money.
Oh, we did, we, we did allocate some of our COVID to some of our COVID relief money, uh, to, to work with the county, and the same thing, the county could have done, um, done, we don't, I don't think it's been clear yet if the county has that COVID relief ARP funds. Each municipality, like, there was like infrastructure improvements and so on, was one of the things that they could use it for. The county got a chunk of that, the county could have also done money where they're gonna put it out, so it's, it's all contingent upon what the county did, but we allocated funds to work with the county to have it extended, like I said, to connect at least here to provide opportunities that way, and I'm, and when I say that way, I'm not saying just the residents, I'm just saying that way in general. As well as if it's some, some, it does go down by Providence down south, cause Broadmoor is supposed to have a pump station and all that. But it does provide that access and, and stuff overall. But it's then on the property owner, I mean, this is how it is anywhere, it's then on the property owner, if they wanna, they'll have a, they'll have an opportunity if they wanna pay, unless, unless municipality or the county some decides to waive tap fees and, and connect for it.
That's a big deal, Heritage District, no, Heritage, Heritage District, building up the, building up the infrastructure.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the long-term things of this, is like, to get that infrastructure in, and if it's sidewalk, road improvements, water, sewer, all of that.
So I guess we're in a position for potential.
I think Rich had.
Rich, did you have Tom?
Yeah, um.
Or Tom?
Okay. I'm not usually the one that promotes sort of revisions on the fly during meetings, um, at all. I like to go back, study, like we did with the underlying strikeout tonight.
Yeah.
But I just couldn't help, um, hearing the concern about the seventy-five foot buffer, so I wanted to, um, suggest something, um, after looking at Ariel's, I think it is, from the back of the properties of Metal Art forward towards Heritage District, and also this, this is, uh, book Rural by Design, um, it's a few years old, but it is trying to promote, and what we, what we're doing with this project is, how do you, how do you, um, preserve the rural nature, and, um, yet allow some uses to take place? How do you, how do you cluster some areas in there, in some, in, uh, in some developments and leave open space so that it continues to look rural? And I flipped to one section in here that has to do with buffers, um, and in this, the context of this one is how to buffer, um, existing homes from a, from a highway, and what they suggest is screening new development behind a no-cut buffer, at least fifty feet deep, preferably seventy-five to a hundred foot deep along the road right of way, except for driveway cuts. So when I looked at, I don't know if I, if you can share this, if I can, um, share my screen? Try, see what happens, okay, here we go.
He might already have access, we might not have that regulation.
Can, can people see this? Okay, so this is, um, Metal Art coming down here, and then this yellow line is seventy-five feet. Um, but look how, look how thick, incredibly thick this, this is out here, I don't know, I'll check where the property line is, but what if we, in front of the word buffer, um, add some language about a no-cut buffer? Um, and it may even say no-cut and enhanced buffer, but something that is strong and that gives the property owners some comfort. It's very hard to get out there with a chainsaw and cut a, a tree and not be found guilty of it when you're looking at a big stump, or get called when a, when a crew shows up that shouldn't be back in that, that buffer. And you will never live a full life that's long enough to see if you can grow as, as tall as this. So anyway, um, with, with kind of that, didn't mean to draw an extra line, but, um, with that thought, and these look very healthy, this was in, uh, Flune and.
They are, they still are.
They still are. So anyway, think, think about that, that might be a way we can enhance that, because we don't have a lot of language about what that buffer, um, is composed of, um, let me stop sharing that.
I think that's a really nice.
I, I, yeah, thank you, thank you for adding that. Um, now, I don't know though, what, um, what the situation though is with, uh, is it Four Acre Pond, or?
Three Pond Acres.
Three Pond Acres.
Three Pond Acres, I'm mixing all up. I don't know what their situation is, I mean, like, yes, to me, obviously Metal Art is important, but it's also important that the other rural properties receive the same amount of protection, so.
But then if that buffer's there, then they could always, part of the deal could be that that buffer needs to be filled.
Correct.
Right, when we could get, I mean, at that point, then if there's a no-cut buffer that has to be there, then we could also, right, so then when they apply, we could say like, okay, there's this seventy-five foot no-cut buffer, right, that you have to, whatever, and right now there's no trees, well, you pick this property, right, so we're gonna need seventy-five feet of trees, right, or whatever. We're gonna need seventy five feet for trees, right, or whatever, like start.
Yeah, and there's.
Start buffering. I like it.
Am I missing this, Tom? There, I thought it was either in the buffer thing, but it talks about the oblique screening where it's like, you know, only like ninety, it's ninety five percent.
I think no cuts, cuz then that would be, so like a really great.
Well, no, well, I, no, no, I'm. No cut there, but I'm saying for yes, if anything has to be planted, the oblique, there's oblique screening requirements that allow where, you know, the. What is planted to make sure that the buffer is sufficient enough to be there is adequate.
Oh, I think I read, that was in. This is gonna be random, I think it said that that gets covered in chapter nine, but I have no idea where chapter nine is.
It's probably, I think it's actually the buffer and screening aren't the normal work.
Okay, yes, cuz I read that.
If I recall, is that we had that conversation about that.
About what is appropriate screening or is not in chapter.
Yeah, they have a percent in there and it um. Now, how do you? It's a, it's a big thumb of opacity, um ninety five percent versus fifty percent, how do you really? How are you standing in the field and telling some, explaining some, something like that to a developer or his landscape architect? Um. Those are, they're really great terms to me, um no cut, it's pretty, pretty strong. And they could say no cut and enhance, so if it's in an area where there aren't mature trees. And enhance means add add in, um but something so that um planning board and the village council when they're and the property owners that are adjacent. When they're approached with a rezoning and have that language in there and say, let's see what you put on your site plan. Did you uh catalog where the trees are roughly? There's so many here, what you couldn't really do is, you could do like a a bubble around a aerial, but you wouldn't do like you would uh. A tree protection plan where it's, you know, every single species labeled and diameter and all that, but um enough where you could.
Consider certain size of.
Put on the plan, it's a no cut, no disturbed area and from then on, the developer knows, the home buyers. You know, at some point, some somebody might get out there with a chainsaw, but there's a a way to um address it without saying. Ah, you're less than ninety percent or ninety five or whatever may maybe in that ordinance draft or in the in the village standard. But anyways, um. It's just a a proposal there of a way to. Keep that thick canopy and uh that that includes understory too, it's not just the. Because you could have someone that sells these to say, hmm, we're gonna get you some nice views in through the woods into some some horse pastures, wouldn't that be pretty? No, just like you don't want them to cut away to get a um lakefront if it's supposed to be natural from the water or through a wetland. Um it's an important part of the community, just like, you know, what says, what what says in this book. So anyways, um that may be a way to handle that, not easily, but in a way that um is meaningful, so it gets our attention and keeps it.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
Welcome.
That's good. Might I just change my.
Are you sort of looking where that might be, Hunter?
I don't know. The what?
Are you, are you trying to find another uh reference to buffers in the code?
Oh, it just says tree species and landscaping shall be chosen from these uh appendixes in chapters ninety three. Which I will mention to everybody, chapter ninety three is our tree ordinance, and that is currently going to be revised by the new county urban forestry anyway because it's completely out of whack. And it's it's good, it's got good regulatory language in there.
We just did that.
You just haven't done that.
The species list is one thing that was in conversation, but.
I thought we changed the caliber.
But we, yeah, we did, you know, one little thing, you know, we we changed the terminology.
That was the price that they have to pay if they cut down a certain caliber.
Yeah, thi- this has been on the back burner for a while, for a while, and it's we. The urban force, the urban force are changed and then the one that we have now is really good, yeah.
We had one urban force who come in and talk to us and.
He, he retired. The one that we have now is really good and I've been in worse management, that's, I mean, that's something out like. It's again, anything that, you know, in this also in this district that talks about where it's referencing another thing. There's all, there's also a plan in places, as I was talking about, the committee used to, there's other, there's plans in place to update and amend those sections to be better for Marvin in general overall.
Any, you know, back to the question though, is it?
Yeah.
No cut? Or enhanced or something, that goes on what, thirty three and thirty four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You would put it in there as just another stipulation.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that stipulation put in there.
Okay.
Me too.
Yeah, that's the only way. Anybody have any feelings against making it more difficult?
No, I'm. No, that's.
Brilliant, okay, or I, you know, quite frankly, then they can just leave it alone.
Well, that's.
Right, nine times I've just leave it alone.
That's what I'm saying.
No cut mean.
And our, okay, just for an example, in our conservation subdivision language, um. They have to have that that fuchsia buffer, that's adjacent to like the major thoroughfare, but then that there's a surrounding twenty five foot non disturbed tree buffer.
Right.
And um yeah, I mean, I think once again seventy five or however much is more, but that's that would kind of be kind of the same idea where you have a undisturbed slash and add the word enhance.
Where would we put this? That's why I'm on that, we on page thirty four?
It would be a mixture of.
Thirty three and thirty four?
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
So um. So basically, it should read, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Rural resident, uh rural residential, the rural residential uses, oh, okay, skip that part, and then it's where it says. The character features are protected by not allowing cluster residential or commercial adjacent, basically staying, I think, just to clarify here. Are allowed with a seventy five foot no cut.
And enhanced.
And enhanced buffer. Correct.
Now, on thirty four, would that be?
Is that, is that right?
Large lot? Where would that, where would that play in on the?
Well, I, I think, well, actually, I think that that no cut.
Enhance, I think it should apply that overall.
We everywhere, whether it be a twenty five foot buffer, you know, or a fifty or seventy five, you know.
I think that should just go on on the chart, right?
That just doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As opposed to putting with each individual thing, just put it across.
Yeah, everywhere.
Yep.
Everywhere.
Yeah, basically, I think we're, cuz it says, doesn't it reference the makers on the next page and just.
Yeah, just anywhere it says tree buffer.
Add a, add a sentence, well, just add a sentence in there, let's say it's all, all buffer, all buffers are defined as no cut and.
Yeah.
Enhance, yes.
Correct.
Enhanced to mean what, ninety five percent opacity or what, what are you talking about here?
It it, that means if there's no trees there at all, you're gonna have to plant trees.
Yeah.
Just make sure that that's what we define.
Oh, and then to define to what?
What does enhance actually mean?
To Tom's point of opa.
Yeah.
Opacity?
Opacity, okay. It's a good word. Opacity.
Tom, does that make sense? We get on.
Yes, yeah, both in the language on page um thirty three as you read and also on this chart.
Okay.
And 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 what you put into the language so that it is can, regardless of this buffer, it needed to, you need to clean up A and. And that, that B consists of table, and then add it on the no that and the e-commerce stuff.
What was, what was E commercial again?
Exists.
That, there is no E anymore.
You're thinking, you're thinking of the the district. What are you looking at?
I'm looking at thirty four. It's the third.
That might have been existing, and that might just have been rehued.
Yeah, that's an error.
Yeah.
Tom, your writing, what was any of that book that you put it out of, please?
Okay, it's um.
It's a good book.
Yeah.
Rural by Design.
By Design.
Right.
And the author is. Randall. So Art. He spent a lot more work, this was uh.
It's probably taken my house.
Fifteen years old. One of the ones great is um I could now that I can Google Earth and see the um.
Tom got it, Tom got it.
Those communities look now, and that that was amazing, I found a great one up in Vermont um called uh. Let's see, and I sent.
If you, yeah, I've got, it's a great, it's, I was. I'm happy to share with you guys, but it's really kind of actually the visionary of what this is, what we're trying to do, it's it's a small town up in Vermont that it's kind of funny. There's a cemetery there on the main thoroughfare, I mean, it's like right near the, it's in in um the building types are similar, I think everything.
What's the name of the town?
Uh.
It's it's uh Waithfield, W A I T F I E L D, Waithfield, Vermont. And if you wanted to kind of pinpoint right down to it, it's fifty one ninety seven Main Street, will put you right down to what pretty much looks like.
Fifty one ninety seven.
Oh, it's a marking, good. Look like in uh fifteen years.
Yeah, it's looking to the future here.
But yeah, I mean, and this is older, but yeah, I mean, it's um.
What was the uh, what was the address again?
Fifty one.
Fifty one ninety seven Main Street.
There it is.
Fifty one ninety seven Main Street. Waithfield, Vermont.
Looks eerily familiar. Except it has a mobile gas station right on the road.
Well, and not all of it is, not all of it is in this um district, which is funny, and what is, what is also funny. This this was so successful, they're doing another village here, yeah, about a mile away. So when, you know, success breeds success, but they did have um some existing. Structures that were remained during life of this and you can't.
Beautiful, beautiful little town, looks like a thousand fifteen hundred foot hill surrounding it, it's beautiful. My God.
Yeah.
That was.
So.
That's sad, and and even, I'm actually gonna share the screen real quick just to, you know. Just so everybody can see.
Although they've got a car wash, a laundromat, those are, those are not allowed in Marvin.
I was gonna say, those are on our prohibited list.
You're gonna have to move it up top and then you're gonna have to reshare, it's not gonna share.
Okay, I know everybody's probably seeing a black screen right now, so hold on.
Liquor store.
Go down the street.
I like the idea we're gonna have to discuss it, it's been so long.
Go down the street to where it's a little.
Can everybody see this? That's online?
Yes.
Hey, look, a cemetery downtown.
Yep, that's what I'm saying, and like, I'm gonna go back here cuz this is like what I, Tom and I discussed, I mean, honestly, even even in these like live photos, like they have like a farmer's market going on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on.
Or a little like a bit, I mean, it's just kind of really captures this, but like, I wanna show, when you think of mixed use parcels or.
Oh, they light it up.
Down the road.
It's really nice.
I wanna get back here.
It kind of looks like Banner Elk.
Um.
I don't know Banner Elk.
Yes.
They have the woolly worm festival there.
Here we go, like, when you think of the mixed use parcels and stuff, like, this is, you know. Kind of what you're thinking of when it comes to like storefronts or, okay, why can't, I'm sorry, Google Maps, it's very good, but. You know, I wanted, like, one thing I pointed out here to Tom, it's like, here's a hardware store, it's a nice hardware, but you know, their sign is like, it makes it look local, and you know, the curious you can feel. Here's a barn that's using multi purpose barn and stuff like this is what would be stuff and. And so this was just a very good thing that Tom pointed out, I mean, we, I have a PowerPoint that I was. You know, if it needed to get to it, then we would share it, but you know, this is trying to show everybody. This language is similar and like, we, Tom and Tom and I, Tom, Tom's looked at the ordinance and I've seen it, I mean, some of their regulations, I mean, yeah, it kind of mirrors some of the things that they have going on, I mean. Permitted uses are one thing, but you know, building type and this and the and the way it's developed, I mean, that's kind of what we're trying to achieve in the long run.
Mm hmm. You can write down the small traffic jam.
Yep.
Well, it's eight forty five.
Yep, so. I guess if, real quick, you know, if there, if if we feel like there's company make a recommendation, then. I wanna, you know, discuss, I'm not, when I say discuss a few things, I want to make sure that it the. Cuz I'm pretty sure then the recommendation will be to approve as amended, and I wanna make sure those amendments are clearly outlined. If that's okay, and make sure I didn't miss anything.
Let's go ahead and do that, took the amendments, just state them, then we'll go to potential motion. Does everyone agree we're not gonna need Thursday?
I second that.
Yeah, okay.
I don't want to be here on Thursday.
So um.
One day off.
I guess the first one, are we deciding to leave on page fifteen, is it lighting or photometric plan? Are we just gonna leave it lighting?
Just consistent. But if you.
Lighting and photometric, lighting slash photometric?
No, a photometric is a lighting plan, and we referenced it later on in the, in this plan. Not the end of the world, it's just.
Well.
It's just consistency, that's all, a photometric plan is exactly what we're after.
Yeah.
Photometric plan gives us the, the the lumens, how far the light goes, that's exactly what we want to see.
But does it show what kind of fixtures?
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure the way our our lighting.
It does not show that.
I'm pretty sure our light, I'm pretty sure our our ordinance, our lighting section ordinance refers as to as a full on lighting plan. And I think that's how it's referenced on the construction plans, this lighting plan, and then you have a photometric scale.
We're gonna wanna see, we're gonna wanna see both anyway, we're, like John said, we're gonna wanna see the lighting fixtures, we're gonna wanna see the wall packs, and we're also gonna see what kind of light it produces.
Yeah.
So if you, I mean, we're gonna, a lighting plan would be different in fact that the lighting plan would show the fixture, where the photometric would show the light that. Um is produced by these fixtures.
So I think.
Lighting plan including photometrics?
Well.
Well, if the lighting plan is.
I think our lighting plan and our ordinance already requires includes photometrics.
Okay.
There you go.
If 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 that's what it says, then that's great.
Okay, uh the hot topic, I think the, uh, okay, actually.
Which one?
I don't know, um so then, um so still haven't had any changes there cuz we're leaving that, so the first change would be. Large on page eighteen and it'll be changing the side setbacks to ten for the medium lot, five on the small lot. And we would be removing the maximum square footage for the houses and it would just say no max, because it really, I. That's a weird thing to regulate anyway, and it's just an extra thing. And then same thing, then on the mixed use, those same changes would apply for the large, medium, and small lot there. Um. We'll also be removing the additional, well, tell us already, never mind, so those are the two changes there. If I miss anything, somebody shout, um page twenty five would be changing large lot suburbian to a state house or state home. Um once again, there would be changing the size range to reflect the the changes made on twenty five and for on the on the charts. On page twenty six, same thing, then we change medium lot to a state house and the pictures would.
Bless you.
Thought coming.
Tried to interrupt it. Um would reference a hybrid of the two slash existing residential, uh. I mean, I'll probably honestly find these same developments, but um then my my, I mean, we literally read the same thing as a hybrid of the small lot and large lot. And if there's any formal recommendation there or thing that wants to be put in there, then. Happy if not, then if you just trust me, I'll I'll put it in there for council. Or for the next step. Good, okay, and then we would change. Um it's gonna change the size range on page twenty seven. The topic I wanted to discuss was are we removing the picture on page twenty nine, are we leaving it, and the other picture, I think we're gonna update at least the barn picture. To at least not have the big apple thing on page.
I think we can, I think we're just replacing those two pictures is easy enough.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I think that's a, I think that's a generous concession to take out.
I'm good with that, I just wanna make sure that, once again, I'm documenting the changes that everybody's good with. Um. So then you get into the general standards, which the buffer, which we've already kind of discussed, would be adding no cut. No cut buffer and enhance and making sure those are then directly reflected appropriately on page thirty four, as well as making sure the language is consistent. For um A there for rural residential to reflect the same thing on the buffer. And then.
And then it's being enhanced to that percent. Opacity?
Yeah.
Opacity.
Opacity, thank you.
And Tom, quick question, page thirty four where it says E commercial, that can be removed, can it? Cuz that'd be the existing building?
Um, let me just, uh, let me just make sure I see that, I didn't see it before, but.
Well, honestly, that might need to stay.
Thirty four, there's at the table somewhere, it still says E, E commercial, yeah, um.
We got rid of that everywhere else, didn't we?
Yeah.
Used to be, they used to be at two existing houses, so I'm not sure what the E commercial part was, but um.
I mean, where that could, not that I wanna discuss more, but I mean, that it could be.
Yeah, we'll remove that if we can understand or figure out its origin.
Sure, and Tom, how about, what if we change that to the mixed use and somehow if we put a note in there referencing the existing? Um. the existing, those two houses that we change, to make sure that there's at least a buffer requirement in there for those? Because I think what the intent, I think the intent there is that it was existing for those commercial uses, and so if we just change it to mixed use and like existing, um, I think that the lang, I think it would then still fit, I think what was trying to be achieved.
Yeah, that's where, that's hopefully works, unless, okay.
Is everybody good with that? Just would be changing, and then we'll just say mixed use, um, existing.
Yeah, cuz on, on page three, where you talked about the regulating plan, uh, that covered its district, existing buildings, which was H-E dash E, so that must be exactly what it referred to then.
I think that was it then, right?
I think so. I don't remember anything after that.
Tom, do you know if I missed anything?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure, yeah, we hit on a lot of that at the beginning, and then.
It's on.
Okay, any further discussion or questions?
Is there a consensus that Hunter's covered all the recommend, recommended changes?
We think.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'm honestly. Okay. So if the planning board wants to make a recommendation, then we just need a recommendation to approve?
To recommend approval or not to recommend approval, um, if you are recommending approval, would be recommending approval of the Marvin Heritage District Form Based Code as amended.
Okay, I'll do it.
Uh.
You need a second.
I'll second, I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Unanimous?
I can't yet.
Ken?
Yeah, that was me.
Okay, good. Thank you, everyone.
So I will admit, just real quick, so then the next steps would be, um. Is there a question or something? Nope. Um, so the next steps is that this will then, you know, go to council. Uh, most likely this will be a, um, probably, uh, uh, at the earliest, a public hearing at their January meeting, but I'm sure that will then be discussed at their December, where they would call for a public hearing.
They would call for a public hearing in this, in December, yes.
So, uh, and then all that will be properly notified and, and so on, but those changes will be made, and then it will be presented, um, to council with the changes. So appreciate all the good discussion, comments, concerns. So at, at, at the end of the day, I think, you know, I told Thomas, I think we, I think there's a cool product here, and as you mentioned, at least you're getting the regulations there and, and trying to do something, and, um, I hope we, I mean, like I said, I think we've done a good job of covering it all, but, uh, that's where that condition is going, I mean, that's where a lot of this stuff will be hashed out when it gets into the, the thing, but we've got the guidelines and standards up, so. We're rolling.
Are they, any action item?
He will revise it as recommended and get, and submit it to the council.
And delete those meetings, those meetings for Thursday.
No, I got that, that, that didn't even actually. It doesn't exist, you didn't recess the meeting. It does not exist, yeah.
Okay.
It's on my calendar.
It won in about thirty seconds.
Board member comments, uh, looking at that one. Ken, any comment?
I know, I'm good, thank you.
All right, Kent, how about you? Can't hear you. No, you're good, all right. Uh, Rich?
He mined it.
Any comment?
Again, thanks staff for their hard work and, uh, effort in putting all this together and, uh, again, to my fellow planning board members for having a great discussion and, uh, expressing my care with us, trying to help the village more move forward.
All right, Kelly?
Um, I, I echo Rich, um, and, you know, just want everybody to know that I'm, I'm passionate about this because I really do want to preserve people's way of life, so, you know, I just hope that you're patient and bear with me because I would hope that someone would fight for you if something was, you know, impeding your lifestyle, so, um, and just huge shout out to Tom for, um, coming up with a great, um, you know, solution. It's not a, you know, it's, it's, it's a good middle ground, um, so you allowed me to be able to move forward, so thanks for that, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome, and, um, credit, where credits do, I have to say, um, Rohit, again, did a great job, been doing so much of this work with you all, and, uh, Hunter and I just sort of addressed a few things to be in here, so thank you for that, though, appreciate it.
Like, Melinda?
Not that they'd still be listening, but I would like to go on the record again to encourage people that if you have comments about this, if you've got concerns about this, please come to our meetings, please come and say something. We can't all speak for you if you're not here, write your letters, write your emails.
Yep.
Please come to the meeting.
Come to coffee with council, come to town hall meetings, there's plenty of opportunities to talk to elected officials.
I appreciate that, but come to the meetings and go on the record, because.
That too.
Coffee with council is not.
Well, that's if you want long form. If you want long form, yes.
Yes, absolutely.
You only get three minutes.
All right, Michael.
All good here.
Uh.
You and Bob.
Let's see. I'll, I'll save Bob for last. I'd like to thank everybody. This has been a long, hard, how many years?
Long years.
Yeah, a lot of long years to get to this point.
Can I retire yet?
No, you got about five more years.
Do you, can you even grow whiskers? Baby, little baby.
Not much. All right, Mr. Marklees, any comments?
I wanna appreciate the, uh, sausage making that goes into this, that everybody has, you know, this, this was quite a lot for you all to go through. Um, and, you know, don't sell yourself short, Tom, or Hunter, I know he's left here for a second, but you guys have worked a lot.
He's right here, he's right here.
Oh, there you are, okay, behind the screen there. Um, you've worked a lot with Rohit, um, and again, as I've mentioned before, I appreciate being a part of this because I'm, I'm listening to you, and it makes it easy for me that when I go into a council meeting, I kinda know exactly what you're all thinking. Um, you know, I, I really wanna thank the planning board again. It's repetitive on my part, but I wanna thank the planning board again for the, for the great job you all do. Um, this is where it all happens. This is really where the, the boots hit the ground, and, um, you know, we, you know, we're, we're left to deal with it, excuse the, uh, plot there, but, uh, you know, we're here to deal with, uh, as council, what you folks kind of have to go through, and then we put it to the public. Uh, I thought it was interesting to look at page eleven as I was going through this, and I thought, gosh, all the social media and everything that was going on prior to the election, and, and right there, I mean, this is reality. So thank you all for, for doing what you're doing, and, you know, uh, you did a great job. Makes it easy for the council, so.
Bob, you got everybody flipping to page eleven, cuz none of us can remember what page eleven said.
But, uh, yeah, it kind of just spells the.
Oh, uses.
Offices and the adult box stores and the mattress stores and everything else that's running around there.
Asian massage parlors.
Amazing, the rooms, um, you know, you, we, you know, that, and that was the biggest thing through the campaign, to watch some of the, I'm getting off subject, but I'm just saying, it was, it was interesting to watch all of the, you know, citizens thinking, think they know. They don't know what they don't know, and if, if they were, more people would attend these meetings and see what we're really talking about. There's nothing crazy going on, and in fact, uh, you know, you do a great job, so it's like, you know, and it was frustrating, but anyway, all that, thank you, folks, I appreciate it.
Thank you. A motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Nine over one, hangover.
Give it to Kelly.
Okay. Show of hands, all in favor?
Hi, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Good night. And if Mr. Marklees hadn't run, run on so long, we would've been through exactly at nine o'clock. Bob.
Yeah, I watched my watches, I was saying what I was saying, so I think I'm gonna end it right at nine o'clock, John.
Bob, I hope you like your new name tag and, uh, and elected official pass.
Oh, you get them?
No, for all.
You finally get them for the school.
I finally got them, yes. It took forever.